Okay, we'll bring this to. Welcome, everybody. And we have a, we have a quorum. All members are present. This is the regular scheduled meeting for Tuesday, July 21st, 2020. And we're trying to hold this through teleconferencing. We'll see if it works or not. So establish, a quorum is established. So I'll call the meeting to order. Do we have, any of the planning commissioners wish to make any announcements?
Yeah, Jerry, I just wanted to say, it looks like, I got something in the mail, email, that says the Governor's Office of Planning and Research is going to have an updated environmental justice guidance for general plans webinar tomorrow at 1:00. And if you look at that website, Office of California Office of Planning and Research, I think you'll see the access to it. I think it was sent to me because I'm on some lists from them. I didn't see anything that said it wasn't open to the public or that it had a limited capacity to receive visitors. So the idea of environmental justice in the general plan, I think, is a fascinating thing before we finalize our general plan. And I'm gonna try to attend that virtually and see what's is said.
Okay, that looks like something that may be a requirement for our plan update.
We have an environmental justice element. It's a requirement.
Yeah.
It's in there.
So are, do you think that they're probably gonna be upgrading that?
Yeah, we'll have to see. I would imagine, I mean, we don't have Amy on the call yet. She'll be hopping on in a little bit. She might have a little more information about that. I don't know.
Okay. Do we have any other announcements from the planning commissioners? Okay, seeing none. We'll open the meeting for public participation, a public comment. And this is for items not on the agenda or items that are on the consent calendar. If you, you can either use the Zoom access or if you would like to telephone in to 408-638-0968 And the webinar ID is 827-2274-7698. And the password is 135692. And you, to raise your hand, press 9. I guess we can't tell if we don't have AGP. Can we tell if anybody's, should we make a public comment?
So I can see it. I don't see anybody in the queue with their hand up. Doesn't look like anybody's on a call in. So I don't have just numbers sitting there. So it looks like maybe they're just waiting for this to start the housing element section. Maybe they'll talk then.
Okay, so we'll close public comment and move on to item A1 and A2, the consent calendar. Does anybody wish to address any, any of the items or pull any of the items on the consent calendar? Nope? Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, can we have a motion?
To approve the consent calendar?
I'll second that.
Okay. Would, any discussion on the motion or second? Okay. Scott, would you call the, call the roll?
Sure. Commissioner Lucas?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown? You're muted, Jesse.
Hi.
Go ahead. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Graffio?
Aye.
Chair Lur?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. Okay, we're moving on to public hearings. This is item B1. And this is a continuation of the housing element update for 2020 to 2028. And this is a continued item from July 7th, 2020. And do, do we, Scott, do we have a staff report on this or?
So I can kind of give you an update and maybe Nancy can jump in where I maybe missed things. But, you know, from the last meeting, you know, you got through most of the housing elements and leading right up to the goals, policies, and implementation section. The planning commission also formed a subcommittee of Commissioner Lucas and Commissioner Stewart to put together a vision statement. That vision statement and associated documentation is included in the staff report as exhibits G and H. We also, for the staff report, updated our response to comments. That's exhibit D. And we provided you an exhibit E and some discussion in the staff report about direction that was provided by the planning commission and I think related to potential impacts that might have on having to have a re-review with HCD. So you see that in exhibit E where there's a couple of items that you talked about. One was the increasing the cost per square foot. That likely will generate some interest from HCD. So we would have to go through another review process with them. It's up to a 60-day review process. Hopefully, it would be shorter than that, though, because they've already seen the document. And then the item that you added related to the safe parking program, we'll be including that in there. And that potentially also has ramifications that HCD might want to see, although a little unclear, maybe they'll be fine with it. So I think that was about all I had. Nancy, did you want to add anything?
Just the staff report was updated to include kind of a sample timeline. The timeline assumes that the housing element is adopted tonight, no pressure. But it just was done that way just to show you that there's a lot of things that require notification and timeline. And so I wanted to assume something. So I assumed adoption tonight, then it goes to city council, then, then it goes to HCD for review, another second review of statutory compliance. Then it goes back to city council for adoption because we're assuming the city council might make some changes that HCD is gonna need to see. So it needs to go back to city council for adoption, and that needs to occur before the end of the year. If it doesn't occur before the end of the year, there might be a grace period, but I don't think they've announced one yet. And then that would put us out of compliance.
Okay.
So I would, I would say, you know, at this point, before you hop back in, certainly, this is a continued public hearing item. You do have a few folks in the queue. I don't know if any of them would like to speak on this item again. But if they do, it might be appropriate now to take public comment in case there is any and then hop into the review of those items.
So I also, I also wanted to mention that there were two additional letters that came this week, I think one yesterday and maybe one today. Those were emailed directly to you and they were also posted on the website. Every other piece of correspondence that we received on this item, the bulk of which were prior to the previous hearing, are attached as an exhibit to your staff report.
Okay, great. Thank you, Nancy. At this point, I think, you know, I think you're right, Scott. Let's go ahead and see if, let's open it up for public comment and see if there's any, any members of public that wish to speak to this item.
Mr. Chair, this is Zeke Turley. Can you hear me?
See any reason your hand? Oh, well, we have, we have Betty Winholtz. Okay, Betty, I think you should be able to, to talk now.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Faintly.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to hit a couple of the highlights of my last rendition of the review of this document. Mostly cautioning about the language in terms of extremely low, very low, low and moderate, and how those all interact with the term affordable and workforce. And would encourage you, if you're going to use the terms affordable and workforce, that you define those in terms of extremely low, very low, low and moderate income. So everybody can be on the same page in terms of what those words mean. I also want to add support to Ms. Winters' communication I saw regarding mobile home parks, that it is the residents there that were, that I'm more concerned about than the homeowners, or not the homeowners, but the park owners. I think there needs to be a balance, but I think she raised some good points and I hope that you'll look at those. My point about that only one of the action items seemed to have a quantified objective and the others did not. And I was curious why that one had one and nobody else did, if that could be answered. And the whole thing about the homeless situation and not providing safe parking and then a warming shelter, of course, those, those I think you still want to, and you imply that you would be addressing those this evening. And then, then the last implementation action, again, it seemed like that was pretty cookie cutter, and I hope that you'll make that relevant to Morro Bay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Betty. Is there anybody else, Scott, that would like to speak to this?
I don't see anybody else with a hand up. But Linda Winters. Hi, Linda. You're, there you go. You were on mute. Can you, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Thank you for allowing me to speak. And I understand that you received my letter as far as information about the mobile home parks. And I will reintroduce myself. I'm Linda Winters, new to these meetings, but familiar with city council meetings, attending every meeting for the past year on behalf of the residents of Mobile Home Parks here in Morro Bay. I've sent an introductory letter to the entire commission today explaining our position regarding the housing element report and mobile home park residence. We are very interested in being a part of some sort of coalition with the city and the 1,000 residents that are Morro Bay, are part of Morro Bay's mobile home park residents community. We live in our homes, but rented spaces that our homes are placed. A unique way to live. We love our lifestyle and would like to maintain it till our dying day. We are not wealthy, but we help the city of Morro Bay. We share our talents, shopping, working locally, volunteering freely. We want to keep our homes at prices that we can afford on our retirement and social security pensions. And we hope to form a strong coalition with the planning commission on making that all happen. There is one other issue I would like to mention. It's about the placement of the affordable housing units proposed at 405 Atascadero Road directly east of Highway 1 and Main Street intersection. The traffic there is already a nightmare. I'm very concerned that this project will make it impossible for our residents to even get to their homes. I agree with Ms. Stewart that we should have a multi-level, multicultural, multi-financial status community, something for everyone. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Linda, is there anybody else, Scott, in the queue?
I don't see anybody else with their hand up.
Okay, is there anything you'd like to address on either Ms. Winholtz or Ms. Winters? Comments?
Unless the, not at the moment, unless the commission has specific questions about the comments. I mean, we have the, the letter from Ms. Winholtz and from Ms. Winters. And we'll, like similarly, we've done with other correspondence, we'll provide responses to those as we move it forward to city council.
Okay, great. Thanks. Okay, so moving on, I think we should address the. The mission statement at this point? Can, can we, do we have a slide on that? Or could somebody do a screenshot of it? Or at least?
It's at the end of the staff report. Can you put that up, Scott?
While he's searching for that, do we have definitions for affordable and workforce housing in, in the documents, Scott? I didn't see those.
I think that's gonna be a moving target, Jerry. Wouldn't it be kind of year by year, probably established by the state or federal?
Well, I think the terms are generally used in the industry, but the housing element is part of the general plan. So I haven't had a chance to look and see if there's, I mean, we were also asked if the term local with a lowercase l is defined in the document. And so, and I think some of these things, we have to look at the bigger document because that's why the housing element doesn't have an index, because it's part of a larger document. So the definitions may be defined in the general plan.
Okay, so do we have, so that would basically, you know, workforce housing and affordable housing would be linked to low, ultra-low or, or moderate housing in the, in the general plan there, the definitions?
I think when someone's talking about low income or moderate income, they're talking generically about moderate income and income less than moderate income. I, I didn't think we used the term workforce because I didn't think we had a definition in this county for that term.
Okay. Okay, we just need to make sure that our definitions are.
Definitions for that. I, but we don't have them in our ordinance.
Okay.
So you want to try to share the screen and pull those things up?
Yeah, if you can pull up the mission statement, that would be great, Scott.
Okay, we'll give it a shot. Okay.
Otherwise, we're gonna have to have Michael read it to us.
And if you want later, I found the definition of affordable housing in the general plan document. Thank you.
Great.
Okay, this was, so we have the vision statement piece and exhibit G on the screen now. And then sort of the revised introduction. I'll let the subcommittee, you know, say where they want to start the conversation and what they want me to have on the screen.
Okay, Susan or Michael would, wants to take point?
I think what we did was start with the general plan vision. We looked at, you know, what the housing element introduction was, and Michael pulled up other things from the, the Chamber of Commerce text. And so we sort of discussed all of these issues. And what I did was took all of Michael's sort of pieces that he pulled together and stuck it into one page. Because it seemed to me having something kind of condensed and short for a vision statement would be easier. So it's just kind of a starting point, I think. Does that sort of jive with you, Michael?
Yeah, I think we didn't want to have to reinvent the wheel. There were, there were so many things that as we looked at the other texts, there were, that were already stated beautifully. We didn't want to contradict what was stated. So that's why in H, which was the first document we did, it literally shows you where the genesis of the text is from. So you can actually see in green the things that came from the general plan that we thought would be nice to potentially restate. And then there's things from the Chamber of Commerce letter that I felt were particularly poignant, and I threw those in. And then the text in black was the text that was in the housing element now. So you can literally see where this was meant to kind of be a few paragraphs before the existing text that was there. And then, you know, Susan did a Occam's razor reduction down to a, a little bit, a little bit more brevity, which I don't have any trouble with. I, I think it's, it's one of these things that when you approach housing, it's just like our discussion with the, some of the public comment about the mobile homes. It's like you expect things to be in the housing. So sometimes you want to say, well, what's not gonna be, what's not gonna be in here as well as what is gonna be in here. And the idea of especially saying at this time, these are our problems and this is what we're trying to work on within this housing document for the eight years. So those things are all sort of meant to be showing up in that vision. So I would say, you know, looking at, at exhibit G is a, is a good place to, to do any wordsmithing. And if you'd, if you'd see anything in the previous one that, that maybe was too much of a reduction, we could certainly take a look at that, adding things in. But I think, I think G stands on its own as a pretty good way to start.
Any other comment from the other members of the commission? Reading through, I think you guys did a pretty good job. Scott, did you have any, or does the staff have any issues with any of the statements?
I mean, I think we would, you know, probably want to take it and edit it, you know, a little bit to fit it into the document. But I really wanted to, you know, get what other, whatever other input the commission wanted to provide, you know, before we did that.
Joseph or Jesse, do you have any, do you have any input?
I, I don't know.
Okay, I'll.
Jerry, I wasn't clear on exhibit G, where that was going in the document.
I thought it was going in the introduction.
Yeah, my.
The introduction was also rewritten in exhibit H.
Right. I think the, the idea was that whatever we would put in there as the vision would precede the text that was in the existing housing element introduction.
Okay. Exhibit G, is the first paragraph just an introduction or is that part of the vision statement?
That is the vision statement that should be in the introduction.
Okay, the first paragraph seemed different. And so I wasn't sure if that was part of it or just an introduction to what you were saying in the next paragraph.
I think some of it was to try and tie it in to the Plan Morro Bay, since this is kind of a subset of Plan Morro Bay, but to remind us of where we started in the whole general plan.
Okay.
So that, given that that Plan Morro Bay vision is describing where we want to be in 20 years, that the housing element is specifically focusing in on this kind of community we want to be relative to the housing needs in the, in the community.
Right, okay.
Kinds of jobs and all. So maybe we don't need it, but it's just a way to tie the two in together. And then I tried to pull the page references. The interesting thing was that the Vision Plan and Plan Morro Bay ended up like in section two instead of right at the beginning of the, of Plan Morro Bay. So I don't know quite how that gets dealt with, but.
Well, and also the housing element is gonna be a final document, maybe before.
Right.
The general plan, the others.
You want it to be able to stand by itself.
Right.
But restating what is gonna come in Plan Morro Bay or came before is probably a good way to tie them together.
Right.
I thought.
Okay.
Okay, is that clear, Nancy?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Great. Okay. We don't, don't need a motion or anything on this, do we, Scott? We just need, you know, like a, a quorum for.
Well, I mean, I think you've given us the, the direction, oops, am I, I think you've given us direction. So I think, I think we're okay. I think we can figure out, you know, what to do with it, so.
Okay. Okay, great.
And we also have Amy with us now. She's.
Hi, thanks.
Okay, welcome, Amy.
Wasn't, wasn't a panelist at first there. Appreciate it.
I had to get you up there.
Okay, so moving on, we've got, we were starting in the, the goals and policies and implementations and actions, implementation actions. You know, I, I've got that on 3-17, 3-117 on my printout. One of the things, I had a little problem with just the organization of it. It seemed to follow through on it. We were having to bounce back and forth between pages. Maybe that this section, I was thinking maybe this section could be handled either in a, a, a chart or a, a table, like we did the previous section, or at least put the implementation actions below the policies that they support. It seems we've got the goals and then we've got a list of the policies. And then we have a list of the implementations on three or four pages later, or two pages later. So, you know, like, maybe we should have the, the implementation actions under, like, for policy H1.1, we should have, that's under the goals. So maybe we should have the implementations either under that or have it listed in a, a table where we can see it all across and you can cross-reference it rather than flipping pages back and forth. Did anybody else have a problem with that?
Jerry, I think the intent is kind of a shorthand, quick look at goals, policies. And then if you, if you're, if you're so engaged that you can't stop reading, then you get into the implementation. But you wouldn't get a shorthand view at the goals and policies if you, if you put all the implementation actions under each policy. They're restated before the implementation. But I think if, I see what you're saying, to blend them all in. And I think for, for, for reading comprehension, that would work better. But I think you'd lose the quick look.
Okay, just to me, it seemed like the implementation is actually the, the meat. You know, the, the goals and the policies are overarching, but the implementation seems to be the, the hammer and nails that make it work. So that was my thoughts. If nobody else has a problem with it, then.
Jerry, I think you did what I did and looked at the first housing element that was printed out, the first draft of it. And then there was a second draft because the page numbers are a little different. And, and I would say in the second draft, the way it's formatted, it's a little different. And to me, it flowed better. So that might help. It still separates them. So you have the policies all listed, but somehow.
Well, it seems like we should.
It's better to me that way. And then you have the implementations, but they do relate to each of these action items. So.
Okay, it seems to me just like we should either have all the goals listed, then all the policies listed, then the implementations listed. Or we should have the goals, policies, and implementation for each item listed together. It just seemed awkward to me.
Right.
So you have two of one and then one's, you know, your supporting document or your supporting actions further back. But if nobody else had a problem with that, it just must be my, the way I organize data.
Yeah. It does have the six goals listed right at the beginning. And then it goes through each individual goal with the policies and then the implementation. So.
If I can jump in here for a second. Jerry, are you, are you suggesting we add a table in addition to what's here or instead of?
That's debatable. I was thinking instead of, but, you know, as, you know, as an addition to it, as an addendum to it, it may make, make it clearer as a, you know, as a table in the back, like they do building goods.
Right, I can see what you're saying. And it doesn't, you know, it doesn't, I don't read it that way necessarily, but I mean, if you do, maybe other people would also. So maybe a table would be helpful for others as it would be for you.
Okay, Amy, where, what are your thoughts on this?
Well, at first I was just gonna clarify actually what Susan was saying, that goals that are listed together are the regional compact goals. They're different than the city, the local goals. You know, all I would say, and I don't know if Scott wants to chime in, is that this is the format of all the other elements of the general plan. So there might be a consideration there about changing one of them.
Scott, you have any thoughts?
That is what I was gonna say. Now, this is the format of the, of the, the general plan. And part of that format was driven by our inter. And part of that format was driven by our interactions with coastal commission staff and their input on the LCP portion of that. And so this would be, this would, changing this to a different format would deviate from that, it wouldn't look the same. So, but overall, you have a, the whole entire general plan, and this would be one element that now looks different than the others, which I think could add confusion potentially.
Okay, would a, would a table clarify it, or just cause more confusion? A table at the end, you know, just restates all of this?
So we do have a table at the end in the rest of the general plan, so I think this would be included in that once this is finalized.
Yeah, I was going to say, I saw, I flipped through to that, and it was a great table. You have the element, the action, type of action, whose responsibility, remember that sort of flow chart at the very end? So if this gets that little pattern to it too, I think that would fill in for what Jerry's looking for.
Okay, well, if it's there, it wasn't in my copy. So I must have got a previous copy.
This is in the general plan.
Not in this, it's in, it's in the general plan.
Yeah.
The general plan has the, the table at the back that has all of this, and it's sort of condensed in one place to go look at it, which is really handy when you're looking at an entire general plan. And they, and I think what Amy was saying is, you know, this being an element of the general plan would be something we would put into the table.
Okay, okay, just, maybe that would be sufficient. And it's, it seems like this bothered me more than anybody else, so. I'll, you know, if it's listed as a table in the general plan, then that, I think, I think that would be sufficient. Does anybody else have any overall comments before we get into the individual goals and policies? Okay, then let's move into Goal H1. And Policy H 1 point, 1.1, and Policy H point, H 1.2. Any, any issues on those items?
Can I just go back real quick on that same page, right before there, where we're looking at these regional policies? One of them, and we haven't seen the, the vacation rental ordinance yet, or at least hasn't been made public to my knowledge. You know, R6 on 3125 says, encourage rental units to be prioritized for long-term residents rather than short-term users or vacation rentals. Does, Amy, that doesn't conflict with our coastal commission wanting to have inexpensive, short-term occupancy? They're, they're okay with that regional statement applying to us?
Well, it does say encourage. I think they'll want to take a look at it, and they may have an opinion. It is at the policy level, so there's no specific actions that address that in the housing element. And I think like we talked about before, the short-term rental specific actions are in other parts of the general plan. So, I don't know. We worked with all the jurisdictions on this, so it was a something that was agreed upon by all the coastal jurisdictions, but we'll have to see what coastal says.
Okay.
I think ultimately, you know, where that's going to be decided is in the actual ordinance that we bring forward. You know, to amend the zoning code to, you know, include the vacation rental ordinance.
Okay. Okay, so that's H1, and, and so then we've got policy from H 1.3 to H 1.7. Does anybody have any comments on those? Those policies?
I guess one of the things I was interested in is, is H 1.4, the variable density mixed income planned unit developments. Are we really looking to have some of these larger parcels be mixed units? Or are we looking for them to be attacking the low and lower income levels problems that we have? Is that, I guess what I'm saying is, that looks like it's, it's, some of it could be low income, as opposed to using some of those parcels to attack the larger problem that we have. Or is it just, is it conveniently nebulous the way it's written there?
I think it, it is nebulous to some extent, but I think successful projects mix income. So you, you don't put all of one income group in one spot. You intersperse them throughout the community. I, I agree with what Nancy said there. I'd, I'd rather see more mixture, you know, so rather than say have 10% low income, make it be 20% or whatever parameters we use. But I like the idea of mixing varying levels of family types, income levels, you know, retirement, and, and young kids, all, you know, if that's the kind of place people want to live, that they will choose that. So I'd almost like to see this one be even stronger. Because I think we do have, you know, with ADUs and, and with a lot of the housing that we have approved, we have created these sort of one-identity kinds of housing. And so I like this idea of a, more of a mixed kind of housing, mixed community.
I don't know if we're done talking about that one, but I want to talk about H 1.6 when we're, we're done, Jerry.
Okay. Okay, well, let's move on to H 1.6. Okay, I have just a second. Susan, so do you, you see, or Susan or Michael, do you have any verbiage you want to change, or is?
No, I just, I just think traditionally, when I see mixed income, it's going to be 1% slow income, and 99% is going to be mixed income, it's mixed.
Yeah, we're, according to the codes, you know, we're like 10% at least is, you know, quote unquote affordable. And that's even higher in the smaller units. So if you're under 10, you're still required to put one unit in. So, so I think we're getting our mixes in there, or, you know, and then for, for, for increased density, we're, we're stating that the increased density should, should prioritize low income or affordable housing. I think we've got that stated several places in here. So, so is there anything specific you'd like to change or to add, either Susan or Michael? Okay, well, then let's move on. Jesse, you wanted, you got 1.6 you wanted to talk about?
Yeah, 1.6, there's a, the, the last sentence kind of, kind of sits wrong with me. Talking about higher density with lower impact. So, I mean, I feel it's a bit disingenuous. We know that the higher density is going to impact these neighborhoods significantly with, with parking issues. And I, I just feel it's disingenuous to say it that way, so. I don't know.
Maybe we can change that to something with, to, to minimize impact or.
To minimize impact or something like that, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, because it all has an impact.
Everything does.
Yeah.
It, it does. I think the point behind that is really to differentiate it from like a, a, a high-density housing project. You can create density by having these, you know, tiny homes and micro homes in existing neighborhoods, where they don't have as much of an impact necessarily as putting in a high-density development in one location. I think that's kind of what this is supposed to be saying.
Yeah, I, I, I got that. But in those type of situations where we're, you know, talking about new development, you, you would be considering parking from, from the get. You know, here we're trying to, you know, squirt a, squeeze a round peg into a square hole. And I, and I'm with it, you know, I mean, I know we need the housing. But just higher density with minimized impact to existing neighborhoods is more real.
Well, also with the ADUs, we're actually, they can put the ADUs where the parking is now and not have to replace parking, so we're not minimizing impact at that point, especially when we have narrow, narrow streets and parking only on one side of the street.
Well, we're definitely not lowering the impact. I think that's what I was getting at. We, we're, we're definitely impacting these neighborhoods, and, and I, and I, you know, I'm the first one to jump on the, the boat and saying, hey, we need to do this, we need the housing. But I just, like I say, I, I would prefer to see a different word in there, so that's, that's just my take.
With, maybe change it to minimal?
However, however we can agree on it.
To manage the impact.
Okay.
I like manage, yeah.
I can live with manage.
You good with that Jesse? Okay.
I can live with that.
Okay, then. I've got an issue with 1.7. The way we have our zoning now, which is, you know, admittedly a hodgepodge. We, the new plan actually eliminates some of the overlay districts that are separating commercial and residential, that allow a mixed use, and so, correct me if I'm wrong, but some of those are going to be in the new plan. Some of those overlays are going to be eliminated, and then those, those overlay, those, that zone for those areas are going to be strictly commercial. So therefore, the housing would only be allowed to have one caretaker unit on it, rather than, rather than be a mixed-use, uh, commercial S4 district. Am I, am I reading that wrong, Scott?
I'm. 1.7.
If I can comment on that, just real quick, Scott, in the meantime. The, the live-work unit, as it's redefined in the new residential code and, and the new building code, it really talks a lot about this specific issue. And you can basically put a house anywhere. You can put it on top of a fireworks factory if you wanted to, pretty much.
I mean, we, we have in the, you know, the draft general plan and zoning code, we have policies for mixed use in most of our commercial areas. I think the one exception, we had it on the wild. And then we removed it from, like a shopping center area, I think that's correct. But everywhere else, it allows.
Scott, we're getting a lot of feedback.
Yeah, he is not talking, should you give him a mind.
Somebody probably has a device open.
It sounds like, it sounds like it's fixed.
Okay, good. Yeah, no, you're, you're good. What I didn't want to get into is I didn't want to have our, I give, I'm only using one, not using, I'm only using one, so, one, you know, thing, so the feedback, I don't think is coming from me, but. Anyways, I didn't want to get into where we're reducing the ability to put residential into the commercial, you know, into the, where it's allowed now, and then it wouldn't be allowed in the future. So I think we're trying to expand the areas where we can put residential in, rather than minimize it, so. As long as that's not pushing us towards that, then I'm okay with it.
We actually expanded the mixed-use, you know, areas where they could be. We have transitional mixed-use in the draft, and then we have mixed-use overlay in it as well, that allows for mixed-use in, in most of our commercial areas now, and not just as a caretaker, you know, security unit.
Okay, okay, good.
Hey, Jerry?
Yes.
With respect to Policy H 1.6 and the, the accessory drawing units, does anybody besides me feel that it would be a good idea to put something here explicitly about the the accessory drawing units not being available for short-term rentals to maintain the integrity of this document?
We don't have to do that. It's, the state's already made that decision for us.
That it clearly will not be available for vacation rentals.
Correct.
Okay.
One thing about H 1.7, the way it's written, it says promote a policy of mixed uses, so, you know, if, if we find that in the execution of the plan, we've got some of those restrictions, because I'm, I'm thinking, my, my recollection is like, Scott, we expanded the opportunities for mixed use, so if, if, if we see the act, the actual execution is in conflict with the policy, we can potentially do something down the line. Can, can we do that, Scott, or Amy?
Absolutely. You'll be, it's, you know, kind of interesting. We, we thought we would be done with the general plan, everything by now, or not, obviously, so the housing element's going to be in front of it. So as you, as we get through the housing element, and we start bringing the, the general plan back in front of you and for review, and as you see issues related to that, you can certainly bring them up, in relation to the housing element and/or zoning code, so, sure.
Okay. So everybody good with H1? Any other changes or comments? Okay, so then moving on to the H1 implementation actions. We've got H1, 1.111.1 or something. So, and then. So H, so H1.1.1, and then Anybody have any issues with those items?
I had a, I had a thought, and this may be off base here, and Scott, tell me if I'm out of line in bringing it up right now, but it seems to me the majority of the complaints we get from the general public when it comes to height exceptions is, well, when it, when we have projects, it's height exceptions, and allowing allowing these projects to bust it. So I was wondering if we could maybe think about talking about requiring a 4-1 vote instead of a 3-2 vote to approve these projects?
So, so some of that's problematic, because with the way the state law has changed, affordable housing projects, especially all affordable housing projects are allowed to ask for four, up to four exceptions, and honestly, it's, almost makes them my right. If they can prove that it's necessary to make the project pencil out, you know, from a, getting it constructed standpoint. So I don't know that that's maybe the best way to go about that. If it makes, you know, votes less likely to follow that, then the chances of ending up in an appeal process or in litigation, it would be expanded potentially.
Just a thought.
I said, you know, also, we've, we've come to the point where there's, you know, we usually get at least a 4-1 vote on most of these items anyway, so I'm not sure. I'm trying to remember how many items that came before us that, that would have made a difference on that, Jesse.
Oh, I think we're, I think we're going to be the exception. I think we get along exceptionally well. I'm kind of looking forward to, you know, three or four or five years from now, when we may get an echo hit or two on here, so, anyway, that was just my thoughts.
Okay. Okay, then moving on to H1.1.3. Anybody have any comments on that?
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I guess the 1.1.2, the, the one thing that concerned me there was allow, at the bottom, it says allow greater density bonuses when needed, and that, that seemed to me to be, who, who decides when the need is, the, when the developer? Is, is that a developer-oriented comment there? It, it just seemed to be, anybody could say it's needed, you know?
That's a good point.
I think it's, I mean, it's for affordable housing. I would think it's, it's to do with the State Assembly Bill 1763, where you meet certain criteria and you earn density bonus. And they've increased the density bonus to an extent where, I think previously, we were talking about better, better defining the criteria that a developer had to go through to earn a higher density bonus, but that may have been taken care of for us through Assembly Bill 1763.
What about changing it to say when requested?
I thought the question was who's requesting it?
Right.
Should be the developer or the applicant.
Or upon request.
Yeah, I mean, there's, in the current ordinance, there's criteria that allows you to go above the, what were, what was previously the 1763, a 35%, you know, maximum density bonus. And we didn't have any parameters to put in place to, you know, and one of the things we're going to do with our SB2 grant funding is, was to put some parameters in place, so to develop those, so you had criteria to follow when somebody asked for them, because it's probably going to be somewhat rare that you're going to get, you know, a whole bunch of all affordable housing projects, like the House Low project that you saw a few meetings ago. It's more likely that you'll get, you know, projects that have several, you know, affordable housing units in it, in several market rate units. And so it's, it's those parameters kind of in there that, you know, where we needed some of the guidance, and our current ordinance gets you to the point where you can get up to 35 or over 35. It just says you can ask for more. It doesn't, and beyond that, doesn't say anything. And I think that's what this policy was trying to get. And I think that's what this policy was trying to get at was, and kind of is reflective in what we're going to be doing with SB two grant funding is to kind of put those parameters in place so you know, you know, what we would want. And that's probably related to the affordable levels. We want some extremely low income level, yeah, low income units in there and, and some very low, like a certain amount of them in order to qualify for that over the thirty-five between that and what would otherwise be allowed to be, if you had a full affordable housing project, would be eighty percent density bonus under seventeen sixty-three. So.
And one more thing about this program or this implementation action, I think this is really focused on projects where smaller parcels are being consolidated into a larger site. So I think the reason it said when needed is if, when needed in order to make that project work in terms of the lot consolidation.
So because it's.
Perhaps the language could be better.
Because it's falling after paragraph above, it's, it's meant to be self-reflective on specifically the, um, the, the affordable income. You know, if, I like when you said allow greater density bonuses when needed to fulfill the low and extremely low and, and whatever we're using for affordable, as Ms. Winholz was, was talking about, um, those goals.
Well, maybe if we just eliminate the when needed.
Well, then it seems automatic.
You know, density bonuses, I mean, a- a- as we increase density, we would, you know, basically lower the prices of the rentals or the housing, you know, by market, you know, could be, maybe smaller units and more of them. So, I mean, that, that would almost take care of itself, I would think.
We have a qualifier in the sentence up above.
Yeah.
The following incentives will be considered when required for affordable housing development feasibility on a project by project basis.
Yeah, the bullets, even if they seem like they're automatic, the considered takes away the automatic and makes means that it is, it is subject to review.
And ties to feasibility.
Yeah. Okay.
So I think if we just, you know, maybe when, you know, eliminate the when needed or, 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 uh, leave it as it stands, which, which way do you want to go, Michael?
Hmm. I think everything's based on when demonstrated kind of, uh, aspect to it. But I, I, I would almost like to get rid of when needed, that I, I think allow greater density bonuses would be considered is implied by the upper paragraph as the.
It would also be more consistent with the other bullet points.
Yeah.
Yeah. None of those are qualified.
Makes sense to me.
Okay. You know, we'll just strike when needed. We got three, three nods on that one at least.
Hey, Jerry, I, I have a question.
Sure.
Again, on the H one point one point five, I guess it's the fourth bullet point, which says the city will consider enforcing minimum residential density requirements for R three, R four and MCR. I, I, I didn't understand, uh, what the significance of that was, why, meaning, why wouldn't we consider that? Is that, is that my point? What does it say? What is that?
I didn't. Joseph, I'm sorry.
I'm on page, I, I'm on page, uh, one twenty, actually one twenty-nine, the fourth bullet point, the city will consider enforcing minimum residential density requirements.
Guess that one, H one.
Point five.
One point two or?
It's, it's H one point one point five.
Okay, we haven't got there yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, then I, oh, I'm out to lunch then. I'm sorry.
No, you're just, you're just faster than the rest of us.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, so let's see, so we're moving on to H one point one point three now. Okay. Any issues with that? Okay, then, uh, next, uh, action item is H one point one point four. Okay, and the next one's yours, Joseph, Joseph, H one point one point five.
Right, so that, that, uh, fifth bullet point, where the city will consider enforcing the minimum residential density. I, I didn't understand what that.
Yeah.
Statement was trying to say. I mean, or, I guess I suppose I could guess at it, but, uh, I, I think we could do well to kind of expand on what we defined to be the meaning of that.
Yeah, I had that circled too. I had that highlighted also too.
Well, we, we have, so we have, for each one of the, um, the, uh, land use classifications, we have density ranges for them. And so what it, what it says is, hey, you can't, what this would say is, hey, you can't build below that. So if somebody came in and wanted, had an R three piece of property and wanted to put one single family house on it, we'd say, no, thanks. You need to actually meet the density requirements for R three, um, which is a, you know, medium, you know, density residential standard, like seven to fifteen units per acre or something like that.
Would we just want to get rid of consider and say the city will enforce minimum residential?
Exactly.
That's my, that's my point.
Constraints that, um, so if there is an ESHA on the site, or if there's a heritage tree on the site, or if there's an extreme slope and you can't do it, or if the site is long and narrow and you can't get a driveway back to multiple units. So our code currently has an exception where if it's, if it's not possible to build more units, then you can build fewer units. And so I think that's the consider part, at least in my mind.
Couldn't they do a zone change?
So what about just, you know, if feasible in there as a qualifier?
Well, I, I mean, feasible, it sounds like it might be feasible to the developer or the applicant.
Okay.
Jerry, I, my, my, my notion was just to make clear to anyone reading this, particularly developers, that the expectation going into the process is that we will require at least the minimum density.
What if we added the word existing, um, where it says, consider enforcing existing minimum residential density requirements? Would that be more clear?
I, I would, I would say, get rid of consider, the city will enforce minimum residential density requirements unless there are other constraints. So that allows you to look at ESHAs, look at the size of the lot. So you're just saying, yes, this is what we're going to do, but we understand that there could be other constraints that we have to look at.
Well, let me ask a question to Scott here, if you don't, if you don't mind, or, I'm sorry, Nancy. Um, couldn't they apply for a zone change on an R three where we had ESHA problems? And then that would go before the planning commission, right?
Um, that, I mean, that kind of feel, seems like cruel and unusual punishment. We already own a high density site, it can't be developed to the same density, and now we're going to make them do a, a rezone to do a lower density when our, our current zoning code would allow it.
So Nancy, don't we calculate this on, um, developable area? You know, we, we have slope standards, ESHAs wouldn't be considered into the developable, you know, bubble or developable envelope?
The, the units per acre is just units per acre. It doesn't say units per developable acre or units per usable acre. Some, all of that goes into the review when you discover certain things about a site that causes it to not be developed, ability to develop to its highest density.
Okay.
Can we say though, enforce except in unusual site-specific circumstances? So that it looks like the dominant position will be to enforce with the, as opposed to the, the, the dominant position might be to enforce, you know?
Right.
Yeah, I think, I think we could probably live with something like that.
Okay, is that clear enough for you, Scott?
I think so. Everybody good? Amy, Nancy?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I don't, I didn't really hear what the final recommendation was.
I, I think it was the city will enforce minimum residential density requirements for R three, R four and MRC zoning districts, except in consideration of site-specific extraordinary conditions.
Or constraints.
Right, probably good, yeah.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
What, okay, on the next bullet, what's supportive housing?
Supportive housing is defined in state code. It is housing with other services provided on site for the people who live there. So it's, it can be, uh, rehab or for folks who have disabilities. It's somewhat broad, but that's what it is.
So are we talking about rehab centers?
That could be part of it.
Yeah. Okay.
But it's, it's permanent, it's not, um, transitional housing is usually where somebody is, um, there for a short amount of time.
Okay. Did you have an issue with that, Jesse, or?
No, I didn't know if this was talking about, um, like, um, convalescent homes or if this was talking about halfway houses. I was, I wasn't quite sure.
It's, it, it encompasses more than one thing. Uh, the, the fact that there are supportive services on site in addition to it being a unit or a place where someone can live is the main part of the definition, and it can apply to various groups.
Okay. Okay, uh, moving on to H one point one point seven on the implementation action.
Can I go back? I'm sorry. I was going page by, I was going page by page here. So on, on three dash one thirty, where it says allow manufactured homes in the same way single-family homes are allowed, that's only in regard to the, um, support housing that's up above, right?
No, that's a separate zoning requirement, just related to manufactured homes.
So that means in specifically any, any zone?
Any zone that allows residential.
We can't prohibit them.
Okay, interesting.
It's one manufactured home, it's not a park, so, yeah.
Does the have a density bonus?
It does.
Right, I mean, it's, it's, the, it's treated the same way as a single-family residence would be.
Sorry, I was being snarky. I apologize.
Okay, so I think we're at one point one point seven. And my page numbers are off from you guys', so you're going to have to go along with me then. And then moving on to one point one point eight. Any issues? Okay, one point, one point nine. And moving on to one point one point ten.
This, this, I've got a note here, I've got to see what I was thinking about here.
Yeah, I've got, I've got some underline in here too, so go, Michael.
Will consider reduction or deferral of typically required improvements. And I understand deferral, um, but I'm not sure about reduction, because it seems to be that, that these are the things that are most needed in the high-density areas, you know, to improve the sidewalks, to improve the curbs, um, that they're talking about, you know, the utility infrastructure, those are the exact things that the higher densities are going to impact. That, um, so I, I, I could understand the deferral, but I, I, the reduction kind of spooked me a bit on that one, and I was a little surprised that we would reduce that. You know, on the Haslow, we, we deferred, if I'm not mistaken. But I was a little, i- if, if I would say, well, we can't make this project, high-density project work, it's, it's like we were talking about before, mitigate the impacts. I can't make this work with, with the underground utilities, or I can't make this work without the curb and gutter, or, you know, I, I, that, it, I just was wondering, is, is that going to come back to bite us at some point down the line? Is somebody going to ask for a, a reduction? Because it's an implementation action.
Well, it's a consideration, is all it says. We can consider it and say no.
I, I like that there, actually.
I, I think, I think the idea would be then, if they're, if they're making some requests to not do something they're supposed to do, they're going to have to provide the justification, meaning do the math and, and prove it to us. If they don't prove it to us, then the answer would be no.
You know, if there was a, a lot with a, you know, extremely, extremely long front yard, um, and they had to, you know, improve two hundred and fifty liter feet of, of, of sidewalk, and it just killed the project. I mean, I would like the ability to defer that if possible, if, if that was a deal killer.
Yeah, we also had, uh, I mean, the, the Haslow project also was required to put in a, um, you know, to replace that sewer main there, which is not cheap to begin with either, and they were able to do that. So, you know, I think we have a qualifier in there. I had underlined that same, the, the same phrase too, Michael, but the qualifier there is to avoid being prohibitive. So I think that's where Scott, where Scott says they have to prove, justify it.
Well, what I like in that sentence is that it's for affordable housing developments. This isn't for, you know, McMansion on Agland. Um, so I mean, I, I think, I think that helps.
Okay.
And I think we talked with the state about this one. I don't remember if the language changed based on their review, but I think they liked the fact that there was something in there to potentially address any constraints that are identified related to the fees.
Okay, Michael, how, what's your feeling?
Well, I, I, you know, uh, we've got the consider in there. Um, I'm, I'm just concerned that when I, when I see some of these larger lots, um, you know, if, if, if we have the large lot on North Main, um, that's close to the, to Delmore School, um, is that right? Yeah, the school in North, North Bay. You know, if they would say, well, I don't want to put in the sidewalks, well, that's, that's critical for access to the school or, or, you know, I, I think it's, I, I, I just, especially if it's a, the Haslow thing, because it was all low income, was interesting. But if we have, uh, uh, one of these ones where ten percent of the projects affordable, and they ask for reductions, that, 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 I'll, I'll let, I'll let the future planning commissioners, uh, worry about that, I guess. Uh, it says consider, so.
Okay, um, uh, so then moving, we'll leave it the way it is, and then, uh, moving forward to the next item, H one point one point eleven. Anybody have any comments or issues?
Go ahead, Michael.
I was going to say, I, I like the idea of rounding up fractions, um, on these things, not, not, not looking at point four nine, that becomes the next number, um, when we, when we talk about that.
I wondered why we can't say it's twenty percent instead of ten percent that we're providing in total number of units that would be considered affordable.
I, I wonder if that would drive developers away.
Uh, it, it, you know, it would, that's, that's probably the profit margin.
Well, or you get a different type of developer, or we figure out different ways to help them make up that difference.
Okay.
What is our real commitment to providing, you know, do we only provide affordable housing if, you know, Haslow comes in and says, we'll build a whole thing, you get your thirty-one, thirty-two units here? I don't know, I.
So if you, you know, Susan, if you have, if you're putting in ten units and you require somebody to do under-market or actually under-cost housing for two of those ten units, you're not going to get those ten units built. You're not going to get those two units. You're not going to get the other eight units of market rate. So, you know, you, somebody, somebody would route, you know, they would move to Atascadero or move to Los Osos, or move to the county, and the housing would get built there. So I think we need to be concerned, you know, that's, that's my concern with that.
Amy, do you know if anybody else, um, any of the cities locally, um, have, uh, a number that's more, an inclusionary number that's more than ten percent?
I don't know off the top of my head about the local comparison or the regional comparison. I just was on a previous planning commission meeting in a different LA county jurisdiction, and we talked about this exact issue, because they're considering, they don't have an inclusionary ordinance yet, but they have a three thousand percent increase in their RINA, and they're probably going to adopt one. And they are considering twenty percent. And I have another client all in Ventura County, they're considering increasing to twenty percent, so. So it's definitely being discussed a lot more. Um I think the development community points are very valid as well, um based on my understanding. So it's a it's definitely a decision point. Um I'm happy to look into the the local and regional comparison as well.
Can can we tie this to adjacent communities, the county and the adjacent communities? Because one of the things is being the higher we get that number, the more expensive the market rate housings are gonna go. So if we have a twenty percent inclusionary rate, that means instead of, just for instance, it said somebody selling selling a market rate house for five fifty, they're gonna have to sell that market rate house for six fifty. So therefore, we're we're driving the moderate prices up to make it a profitable situation for people to take the risk to develop. So.
Jerry?
Yeah.
Does does that that disparity going from ten to twenty, from ten percent to twenty percent? That probably gets more acute, more of a profit drain as the as you're dealing with smaller projects, meaning a developer might be, you know, more attuned to accepting twenty percent if he was building fifty units and less attuned if he was building ten, is that correct?
Exactly. You know, and we have mostly small, small lot developments. Whereas the larger developments, you can take a you you can take the density bonus of including those extra, you know, the lower cost and get more market rate units or get more lower cost units into into the site as by accepting some of the density bonuses that you can't handle on the smaller sites.
Yeah.
Well, and and Scott can speak to this more than I can, but I mean, you know, this city's been around a while, so I mean, a lot of the more buildable, the more easily buildable lots are probably built out. So I mean, I imagine we're dealing with a lot of lots. And Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, uh that are probably tough bills.
I mean, that's correct, and that's why you have policy in here also that you saw that, um, you know, that talks about, you you know, putting these small lots together to so you can get more units. Um it's for that reason that that Commissioner Brown just mentioned. Um is we have a lot of small lots and it's difficult to do those types of things and it makes it easier the larger the lot that you have versus the small lots that we have in town, so that is an issue. I mean, I guess I could say this, if there's interest in the commission for us to do this, we'd be happy to, um as Amy said, take a look at our comparators around here and see what they're doing and we can report back to the kid that the city council when we move this forward.
I I'd be, I'm I'm still a little concerned. It looks to me like the way I read this right now, four units, none, five units, one, six units, one, fifteen units, one, nineteen units, one. Do I have to get to twenty to get ten percent to get two? You know, and it 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 seems like it's ten percent, but ten percent really means up to, you know, nineteen percent.
I think it's a combination of that.
Twenty.
And in Lufi's and our ordinance, chapter seventeen fifty has a lot of um language in there to encourage additional density bonus um for the income levels that you're putting those units at. I mean.
It just seems like if you cobble together enough space, you can have nineteen units and only have to provide one.
But if we said fifteen percent?
Or if you put, if you said zero to four, none, five to ten, one, eleven to fifteen, one, you know, you know, whatever, put an index in there rather than a percentage.
As I read this, this is just saying that the city will continue to implement the existing policy. The next section is talking about a strategy to try to encourage people to actually build their affordable housing instead of paying the Lufi by increasing the Lufi and then also expanding the types of developments that are subject to inclusionary housing fees to include single family homes. So it seems like the next section is where if you want to tweak with, you know, we've got some uh grant funding to work on changes to this section. It seems like the next section, implementation section, is where you want to make those changes.
Yeah, why don't we look at that then? On the next action item is what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. So. You know, this also ties into the uh two thousand uh fee, development fee for houses over two thousand square feet. So let's let's consider the uh what Michael was saying, how would we coalesce those the inclusionary housing um set points in here?
The the thing I had written down here is since we're counting in the policies on uh ADUs to become more prevalent. If you build a single family home of a certain size and you don't build an ADU, should you have to pay an in Lufi?
Yeah.
Then we've lost that opportunity for a low income unit and we're 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 down down zoning the density.
And and I'll say, um, you know, if you're if you're um I I would be hard pressed to explain the difference between someone building a multi-unit structure and someone building a house in terms of both individuals are necessarily buying into this housing element um and the value of providing affordable housing to the community. I I don't see where the distinction as to what you're building justifies your need to contribute to that inclusionary housing. Also, also, I have one, I'm sorry, I have one other question. You know, I uh I I suspect that that admittedly, we don't have a lot of developers coming to Morro Bay, but other groups that do or have in the past that probably the in Lufi has been much more popular than building the actual units, is is that correct?
And and I think that's why this section is written the way it is, to increase the Lufi and broaden what it's applicable to, to try to encourage people to actually provide the units. But it's tough because they're deed restricted units for a minimum of thirty years. That's a long, long commitment versus the short term pain of paying some in Lufi's upfront. So you could do both, could increase the fees and you could increase the applicability of the inclusion, your increased percentage.
Can I ask here, Amy, is is are there any communities that actually take over the the um uh administration of these low cost housing in the community development? Uh. Department?
Yes.
Because this is part of the problem too, is the administration. If you've got a small, if you've got a small development and I'm kind of speaking, you know, from my, you know, my personal knowledge here and you you're doing between the the five and the ten, ten units, you've got to administrate this whole low cost housing for thirty years for one unit. It it it's quite a burden.
It's it's.
Trying.
It's an annual certification, it's most management companies will handle it. It's it's just an annual certification of rental income verification.
Yeah, it just.
Yeah, we do the, you know, the the conditioning on these do require them to report to us.
Right.
And we have to agree with the um with the qualification process. I mean, we're doing that for moral mist right now.
So is there any? Is there any way that that could be brought into the into the community development to to? Because, you know, one one personal developer handling six or seven units is not gonna have the staff, you know. They're they're probably handling the rental, the rentals themselves rather than running through a through through rental agency.
Yeah, but I think a developer is typically gonna construct and walk away. They're not, they're gonna sell to an investor, they're not really gonna gonna manage typically a thirty year, forty year, fifty year type plan. You know, they're gonna come in, knock it out and what, get get out of there.
And 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 I and I wasn't arguing that there was no place for in Lufi's. I'm just arguing that there's such a disparity so that it seems like an obvious justification as to why the in Lufi's have got to be increased substantially because because the developers are always opting for the other choice, which means uh it's undervalued.
Well, and we literally want both. We we typically, when the development comes in, we want the affordable housing units and we also need to have some source of um housing funds to assist with affordable housing projects. Um and in fact, when they're tax credit projects, us giving them money has them score higher in their tax credit applications. So I mean, there's a lot that goes into that. Um and also you need, you know, money to do things like, you know, pay for the housing element that we're working on right now, so.
So Scott, is there any, you know, kind of moving moving on to the ADU that that was brought up, I forget, I think Jesse brought it up.
Michael.
Is there any uh methodology in here for the if if you include an ADU in in a larger home to get a deferment on the uh on these development fees so that it would encourage an ADU, so you would have, you would have the housing by by design. You'd have the low cost housing by design rather than by fiat or by management? See, right now, I don't see.
I thought what I heard Mr. Lucas saying was that it would actually be an in Lufi that would be applied if an ADU wasn't built. Is that what you said?
You could do both.
But it it doesn't read that way to me, it reads it reads that if you build a larger house, whether you whether you whether you supply an ADU or not, you're gonna be charged. You know, you're gonna be charged a development fee.
Yeah, so we we weren't, we didn't talk about ADUs when we wrote that language. I think that's a really good thing to discuss. I guess I was just trying to clarify what was being suggested. Um just in terms of fees related to ADUs, they're very low. I I don't know that waiving fees associated with ADUs would be a solution that would help very much, I guess, that's the.
But you're charging a development fee for the main residence.
He's talking about the inclusionary housing fee, I believe.
Right.
Right, so you're you're charging an inclusionary housing fee when when they're already providing an ADU, they're already providing uh low cost, you know, affordable housing.
Perhaps if they were required to act, if they were going to rent that as an affordable unit, then they could see the nexus there. They're not required to even rent the ADU if they're building an ADU, so you wouldn't know for sure if it's an affordable unit or even a unit that's on the market otherwise.
But it's gonna be a unit by design. Even if they don't rent it, it's gonna supply housing to a member of their family or it's gonna supply housing to you're actually, you know, a caretaker or something.
Oh, yeah, but Jerry, I could also imagine kind of an evasive ploy where the ADU is not a detached structure. It's attached to the house with an exterior door. You know.
A red herring.
I can I can imagine, oh, can imagine where it's uh it's basically a ruse to avoid.
Yeah, but still, you've got, you know, those the houses will be rolling over every seven years. So you've got it, you've got it built.
Yeah.
You know, it it could be built and, you know, and then somebody could roll it over the other way too. But you would have, you would have the structure, you would have, you would have the unit built. So it would, you know, eventually, you know, it would have the, it would it would be used, I think. I'm just.
If I could throw an opinion in here, I I think I think we're gonna get enough ADUs, uh folks that want uh accessory dwelling units and want that 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 income, that that rental income to supplement their mortgage, their extremely high mortgage. But I don't think that it's gonna be necessary for us to implement some sort of a like additional burden on a on a development.
But we're burdening, Jesse, I don't mean to argue, but we're burdening the, anybody who builds anything over two thousand square feet. We're burdening them with a with another development fee.
The fee I'm in I'm in favor of, I mean, I I get that if you're, you know, building a two thousand, you know, four thousand square foot McMansion on on whatever. Yeah, that that makes sense, but I mean, I I just don't, maybe I misunderstood the what was being, uh, I'm sorry, the echoes um suggested here.
Well, I'm looking for some. Okay, the standard how the average house size of square footage is about twenty four hundred square feet in California. So we're we're penalizing somebody that's building a a standard sized house or the average sized house with with a fee, even if they even if they supply an ADU as a, you know, as a, you know, potential for for, you know, for low cost or affordable housing with the unit.
Right, but but in the design phase there, they're just gonna throw an additional wall up and uh call their wet bar a kitchen and now it's an ADU and uh I I don't think we're getting what we intended to get. I think like Amy's, or I'm sorry, maybe Joe was saying that, uh, you know, they're gonna, so it's gonna be a ruse. It's gonna be, okay, well, yeah, this is a ADU, wink wink, you know, it's not really an ADU, it's just a big gigantic house.
That's that's, you know, personally, that's not what I see. You know, I see people actually wanting to build the ADUs, you know, for their, you know, their, you know, transition or kids or something as they're trying to transition into their own families or they're they're bringing their their parents back into the household and stuff. You know, those, you know, it used to be when their ADUs were not as easy to build, you would actually build a game room and then then turn that into a, you know, then you you'd put your granny there. You know, and then give them a hot plate and stuff. But with you with, as the ADUs are become more acceptable and code wise, I'm seeing the people that are that are that have come to me for them actually are using them for their 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 kids, their parents, their, you know, or renting them to a young professional who's just getting started in this area.
Right, right, no, I mean, I I get I get what you're saying. I I think what I'm saying is, um, I think it would be more likely that they would use it as a guest quarters rather than an actual rental unit. So I mean, did we get what we um were after? I don't think we would. I think we would get, you know, you know, Joe Schmo homeowner over here who also has a guest quarters for their, you know, very frequent guests, we live in paradise, so I mean, people want to come here.
And and I think the concept is to create changes in the inclusionary fee section to incentivize people to create reportable affordable housing. So, for example, if we included houses that are over two thousand square feet and they put in a J ADU and an ADU and were willing to deed restrict it for some period of time, then I could see reducing or waiving the fee, but I I think Jesse is right. I think it, you know, could look look like meet all the requirements for an ADU, but it could be the pool house. So I think in in our biggest problem with ADUs is nobody reports any income. So we believe that they're affordable by design and we make some assumptions on how many of them actually would be affordable. But it would be really nice if we waived a fee for someone that they actually deed restricted and made a commitment.
I agree.
You're not, I don't, that would be really nice, but I don't see anybody would do do the the reporting on that. I think that would that would be a burden that nobody would take on.
Then then they can pay the fee.
Right.
And and I mean, you can also, I I suspect you can make a case that anybody who does building or remodeling in Morro Morro Bay ultimately leads to the increase in the average value of housing in Morro Bay. And that ultimately exacerbates the problem of affordable and low cost housing. So irrespective of whether they build accessory dwelling unit, just the mere fact that they're improving their house ultimately makes it more difficult for low income people to afford to live here. And and then if you add to that, people who are particularly well-heeled, who come into really remodel and build a much more expensive house, that drives the value of houses up as well.
Yeah. I just see this as reducing the number of units that will be built.
But it sort of depends on the fee. You know, you know, I mean, it it matters what the amount is, right? You know, if it's five hundred bucks, if you go to twenty five hundred square feet, then everybody's just gonna pay the money and move on, you know. I mean, if it's fifty thousand dollars, then maybe they consider building an ADU. I mean, it, you know, it devils in the detail.
What do you have? Bring up, okay, I'll bring up a personal side. I've, you know, I've got a house that I've that I was going to build and, you know, it's a. that I was going to build and, you know, it's a 4,000 square foot house with an ADU attached, including the ADU. And the development fees are already $97,000 for permanent development. That's a lot of money for, to put upfront before financing to, you know, and then take the risk of whether it's going to be profitable or not. So the fees are already, the fees to build in Morro Bay are already extremely high. So anything we add to that is going to make the situation worse. So that's all, I'll leave it at that point. So where, where, does anybody have any wording changes they would want to add to this implementation action item?
Well, back to the 10%, 20% thing, did we ever get past that?
Michael, do you have anything you wanted?
Yeah, I, I, I just think we're, we're going to end up with the same thing that happened in the last 10 years. We're going to end up with no affordable housing. And, and, you know, if we don't, if we don't have fees, when you're not building it, there's not going to be any money for people like Haslow who do want to do it. And if, if you want to do it, I think you should have some benefit from doing it. You'll, you'll have an economic benefit from, from the rentals. But I, I think, you know, this is our, this is our chance to say something for the next eight years when we're potentially going to have a, a huge influx of people migrating due to the pandemic fears and job migrations and things. And these are going to be more critical than ever, I think, in, in the future here. So I, I like the idea of, of stating a definitive thing rather than have a, a wiggly percentage with the, you know, percentage of unit thing. And, and in this, I would like, I'd like to see us have, maybe it's a floating scale or, you know, one of my pet peeves is that when we say how many square feet is something, somebody has 600 square foot garage supposedly. And, you know, instead of, is it a 2,000 net occupiables square feet? Or is it 2,600 with your 600 square foot? So I would like to see it, whether it's 2,000 or 2,400 or whatever, be a gross square footage number as opposed to, you know, one of these things where we've had some fantasy projects where it's only a 2,000 square foot house, but it's got a thousand square foot or 1,500 square foot garage or something, you know? I, I don't think we should, I think it should be gross square footage. Maybe it's the fees, the slides that if you deed restricted, it's, it's waived. And I, I do think we should have some numbers rather than percentages.
I agree with the numbers.
Okay, then we're going to have to change these numbers because a 2,000 square foot gross area is going to be a 1,500 square foot house.
Right, right. I'm, I'm going to make trouble making it realistic. I just don't like the creep of, of, of square footage being there that we know they're going to use differently at some point.
I will, I'll also remind you all that the draft zoning code doesn't require garages. So one thing is not like another, which is my point.
Right, so maybe we need to qualify this as living area. Or conditioned area. You know?
Well, to Michael's point, I mean.
I would implement it now, whether it's written, I wouldn't assume that it's gross. As Commissioner Lucas was saying, I would assume that it's habitable.
Right, but we get these, wow, wow. I've seen, seen a lot of 600 square foot ADUs with a 1,200 square foot workshop slash garage like Commissioner Lucas is talking about. So I, I agree that a gross square footage number is probably more appropriate in increasing the numbers of like 2,500, 2,600, 750, something like that. And also I, I liked his idea about the, the number rather than the percentage.
Okay, so we've got, we've got two, Susan, Joseph, where do you guys sit?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of, of actual numbers, something or something to make it more definitive. I, I also wish we could just say something definitive about how we're increasing the in lieu fees rather than leaving it unsaid.
Well, I think those fees are going to be determined by the, by the city council and will be changeable as it, as it goes on.
But what I meant was a suggestion somewhere in this that they should be increased if that's appropriate.
I think this calls for that study to happen.
All right. Hey, Susan, where do you sit on this?
Um, I like the idea of, of real numbers versus percentage. And, and I keep going back in my mind to something that Michael said when we were talking about all the vision stuff. Which was that our housing stock is not only underutilized because of vacation homes and vacation rentals, but it's underutilized because we have so many relatively larger homes with one person living in them. Including mine. Um, I think mine is about 1,000 square feet and it's just me, but there's plenty of room. So a 2,000 square foot house with maybe a couple in it who's retired seems like underutilized housing. So it doesn't hurt my feelings that it costs a whole lot to build a 4,000 square foot house unless you've got a 10 persons family going into it. And, and yet I understand the frustration on the developer's side of it. So again, if this housing element is supposed to be looking at affordability and how we make that happen. And unless we're serious about doing these in lieu fees so that we can help other projects, other developers who want to do that 20% inclusionary housing, then what's the point of any of it? So I don't, I don't see the point of requiring somebody to put in an ADU. Not everybody wants to be a landlord. Yes, there should be incentives for that. We should make it easier for, and I think the state is making it easier for people to do that. But to require that or you pay an extra fine, I'm not sure I would agree with that. But having higher in lieu fees in bigger projects where you have the opportunity to build affordable housing units, but you opt not to, yes, you should pay a fee for that. And if you're building a house that's bigger than whatever the average is, and you guys know those numbers in California, then yes, I think you pay some significant amount into these in lieu fees to help build affordable housing units elsewhere in town. So that's my thoughts.
Okay, what words do we put in?
I think the words are there. I'm not sure, at least in this H1.1.12, I'm not sure it's missing. Strongly encourage development applicants to provide affordable units versus payment of in lieu fees, but the in lieu fees when approved are collected and held in a trust fund. Uh, maybe something. I mean, the council again will decide on what those fees are and those will change over time. So I don't know. Who's got ideas on changing?
The, the policy inside of it's under the timeframe section says, hey, we're going to do this by 20, December of 2022. And it says, hey, you're going to take a look at this and determine whether it's appropriate or not and what that looks like.
So that's good, gives us a little more time to play with it.
I mean, I, I, so I might, by the way, I'm bringing that up is, is we don't have to make the decision right now. And quite frankly, the discussion that's happened right now, I don't see consensus on any of the things that you've spoken about so far. So I, I think that this probably does take a larger effort and one where we need to sit down in a group and work through what that looks like. And that, and this policy, the way that it's written right now lets you do that later. If you're concerned about what that might be construed as later though, then you need to come up with some language to put in here. So that's my take on where this is at. I think you have opportunity, just again, these are implementation items. These are go do things that the council will put in their goal setting processes for future years for us to go work on.
Jerry, if I may, I, I know Michael and I agreed, but I don't know if I got any more nods, maybe Joseph. But that, that sliding scale, I think we should definitely throw that in there if we can. That's something that may not change, you know?
No, no, 1.1.11 then, we go to under five units, you know, from five to 10 units is one, you know, one unit and from 10 to 15 units is two units and then 10% above that? Is that what we were talking about?
I don't know that we got to the actual numbers, but you know, Susan brought it up about 20%, but then Michael, you know, asked about the sliding scale. So I, I think we ought to really nail that one down if we're going to nail anything down on this.
I, I just like rounding up, that's all. So as soon as you get to, to 10, and when you get to 11, it's two, until you get to 20. When you get to 21, it's three.
I would have been more in favor of one to 12. You do one, at 13, you have to do two. That's just kind of, you know, the number.
If there's something there, someone at a, at a higher level pay grade than we have, since we're not getting anything right now. It's, they can, they can adjust the number, but if the number's not there, they can't adjust it, you know? So I would say.
Maybe, let's bring Amy back in here. What, you've, you've heard the discussion on this, what, what do you suggest? What is it, what have other people done?
Yeah, so I like what I heard about the gross square footage or making that more clear. Whichever way you want to go with it, if it's putting in gross and increasing the square footage or saying living area, it sounds like it's not clear to you guys. And so it might not be clear when someone's actually administering it. If this is what ends up going in. And then I have been able to research a couple of the other jurisdictions. The county, they start at 20%. And Ro Grande has a sliding, kind of more of the sliding scale model. It starts at two unit, you know, trigger, it's triggered by two, a two unit development and then the percentage varies. That's all I've been able to find so far. Some of the stuff is more buried, some of the other jurisdictions.
No, we want to consider more general language in this section so that we can study it and then determine, because it's a little bit of a balance between increasing the in lieu fee and increasing the percentage of units that must be applied. Because we, we're trying to encourage people to, to create the units instead of just pay the fee or we have to increase the fee more. It seems like you could change the last sentence in H1.1.12 and say, consider scaling the fee for applicable projects. And that leaves us with the, by June 22 to come up with the changes that we need to make to that section of the zoning code.
Or, or I'm looking at, in that same paragraph, the city believes the inclusionary fees are reasonable. Well, that seems to really imply that they don't have to change. So I would, I would take out the reasonable and say something about the, the city will evaluate or assess in some way, not, you know, instill the conclusion that things are fine the way they are. Because if that were true, then you'd see some kind of equivalency between builders opting for fees versus builders opting to actually build.
But I think the rest of that sentence says that we, we believed when they were adopted that they were reasonable, but we're not getting the results that we thought we would.
Okay, all right, I buy, yeah, okay, I see your point.
Okay, so let me, let me try, let me try this. Let's, on the 1.1.12, let's go ahead and increase, increase the square footage to 2,500 square feet and go for the gross, for gross. Gross area. That's kind of where, I think we had consensus on that or where it was headed. And then on the numbers for H1.1.11, we're talking about, what is it? For, from five to 10 units, we're talking about one unit, one affordable unit? From 10 to 15, we're talking about, or 10 to 20, we're talking about two affordable units? Or 10 to 15?
But so, so I think 1.1.11 is just saying that until we have another policy, we're implementing the current one. And those are the standards in the current one. So the next one is talking about making changes to the inclusionary fee section and changing what it applies to, how it's scaled and the fee amount. So it does seem like we should broaden maybe the last sentence because I think we're talking about scaling the applicability of the inclusionary housing fee to a larger group of projects.
And we're talking about 12 or 11.
So if I could paraphrase, but I think I hear Nancy saying is we have another, you know, two years until this is needed to be done. We know we need to get it done, we'll get it done later.
Well, and I'm saying put something general, we can't hold up the housing element. But I don't know that we're going to agree and I don't know that we want to lock it in because it's a balance between the fee increase and applicability of how many affordable units you need to apply. So I, I think we want to be general on both. And say we want to make it applicable to more projects and probably a higher scale, but that'll be determined by 2022.
Okay, so then we leave the wording, you're suggesting we leave the wording as is then?
I'm suggesting you change that last sentence. There's something like, consider scaling the applicability of the inclusionary housing fees to a greater number of, of projects, including increasing the amount of affordable housing to be created or the applicability, however you word that, whatever that chart is, that one to five or one to 12.
Okay.
To increase the percent of affordable housing that needs to be created.
Okay, that's a to be done item. On the H1.11 though, would you include the, would you change it from a percentage to a, a slight, a set scale?
I think what Nancy was saying is that's just describing what's in place now. And then the action item is to actually go do the analysis and make a decision how it should be changed.
Okay.
I just think it's ambiguous, that's all. I, I think I can build 19 units and provide one with that, the way it's written.
No, you're right.
But, but that's, it's supposed to be describing our current ordinance.
But it's not describing what we want to have happen, it's the current state of affairs.
Okay, so 11 is dealing with the current, 12 is dealing with what is going to be the proposed.
Yes.
But we're talking about different, different, different numbers. We don't have, the proposed isn't dealing with the, the percentages.
I, I think what's, what's confusing here is that the, the implement, the actual implementation is buried in the last, uh, is buried in there, what maybe should be front and center first sentence, we are going to do this in June of 2022 and then explain what we're going to do.
Okay. Okay, so who has a recommendation here?
I think Scott's kind of right, we're, this is something we need to drill down on more. And if we have two years to do it, it may take that long. Because these are the implementation actions. So yes, 10% is what we're currently doing. But we're talking about what we want to be doing for the next eight years. And it sounds like what we're saying is we want some, some stronger actions to take, abilities, whether it's the in lieu fee or just to say, you've got to do more than one unit if you're doing 19 units in a property. And, and I don't know how often that's going to happen. We don't have that many large lots here. But there's got to be ways to. But there's got to be ways to incentivize development that is appropriate to, to what people actually want here. Um, and I, and I, what I see in a lot of the development that's going on, I don't know who's buying those houses, except again, wealthy people coming from out of the area who just want to escape big cities and want a second home. So.
Well, but we could, you know, on accident, you know, create a, a housing element where we incentivize people to start tearing down these old 1936 houses, consolidate lots and start doing these, you know, big projects. So.
Well, we don't currently get applications for very large homes right now. Just not happening.
Even with, no, I mean, so, yeah, I was talking about, you know, building 12 unit developments on three or four lots across, you know, a whole street front or something.
It was, it was just a general statement that I was making. Uh, it's, it's not something that we, you know, a while ago, when I first started working here, we were seeing, this is six years ago. Um, we did see applications like that. And it's one of the reasons we have residential design guidelines. But since then, we haven't got, we haven't received, you know, significant number of applications for large homes. And even the additions that most of the, you know, on the smaller homes that we're getting, the houses end up being under, you know, 2,200 square feet. A lot of times under 2,000 Wayne Colmer subdivision in Black Hills Villas, none of those were over 2,000 square feet habitable. I think they, I think the biggest one was 1800 square feet.
Okay. So we need to get a consensus here so we can move forward, guys.
Okay. So, so here's a suggestion. The, um, second to the last sentence says, in addition, the city will update the development types subject to inclusionary requirements. We could add in and increase the amount of affordable housing to be provided versus paying and then Lufi and then pick up and also include single family projects of a gross square footage of 2,500 or more.
I, I could agree with that.
Jesse? Okay, Michael? Okay. Uh, I think we got agreement on that. And then back to H111. Are we, uh, going to go with set numbers on those? Are we still going to use the percentages?
We can't change it. That's the existing.
Okay. Okay. So we're good on that then. Uh, let's move on to, uh, H1113. Any, anybody have any issues on those? Okay. The next page I have has H1114, 15 and 16. Any, any red flags on those?
The only thing on 1115 is in the, it goes into a list of things that says, this is not intended to be an exhaustive list of incentives available to the applicant owner team. And it just, the note I put down is what's not in play. I mean, is everything in play? Uh, I, we know a lot of these things are becoming, you know, uh, legislated that we have no discretion over them. But, uh, uh, I, I think it's interesting and I, I like the idea that we're, we're opening up the board, the game board just for, for someone who's inventive to come in and think about these things. But on the other hand, um, you know, in the, in the two, two implemented and to implementation actions above there, we're talking about compatibility and design standards that are objective. And wow, what, what's not, what's not in play? I, I don't know. That's more, maybe more of a comment. Um, I, maybe it's, it's too much of a Pandora's box to open, but, uh, I don't know what I would say to exclude if we would have an exclusionary statement, but, uh, that's just what struck me as I read it the first time.
Think what we exclude is Escher. Development into the Escher. Okay. Um, so we leave that as it is and we're into H1117, 18 and 19.
I'd like to talk about 119 when we get a chance.
Um, I remember in 117, um, Betty Winholt's had a question about the conversion of older motels to residential use subject to discretionary review. And she wondered if that was, um, planning commission or staff? I think that was her question. Maybe that could be clarified.
Discretionary review would be planning commission.
Thanks.
Well, and going up to 1116 real quickly, when it says the city in Lufi fund, do we have to put affordable housing or inclusionary housing in there to make sure people don't think they can raid the parking in Lufi or something?
We could add that reference.
Okay. Okay. Well, let's get, uh, H1119 then, Jesse.
As a point of clarity, I didn't really understand, um, this sentence as it's like, um, two thirds of the way down. As part of the activities included in the city's SB2 grant work, the city will explore additional ADU regulations that are less strict than it's what is allowed under state law. I just don't understand what that means.
Okay, Scott?
So it would be allowing more flexibility than what is allowed per state law for ADUs, whether that's in terms of the square footage requirements, minimum sizes, things like that. Um, state law is pretty, pretty permissive, but there are still standards in state law. So there's something that the community would want on that.
One of the things I was, I was interested in there is, is where's something like cohousing fit in there? You know, does, does that open that up to shared facilities within a single site with multiple units? So sharing kitchens or, or bath facilities, things like that?
Related to ADUs or?
Well, just the whole idea of, um, if it's going to be more permissive, I, I wasn't sure what that meant either. You know, to me, the only thing would be more permissive is, is the two dwellings start to share facilities in order to save money to create the, the, the project. So that made me think about cohousing and, and I don't know if we addressed that anywhere in here specifically. And that's just the note that I wrote down to myself. You know, shared kitchen bath facilities. Could you start to have multiple small dwellings on a site then sharing a core, you know, cooking, bathing kind of ways?
I think that's allowed with single room occupancy units. So that might, you know, it's not something that would be prohibited. I don't know that it would, you'd want to have it in the same category as a state ADU, um, because those are required to be, they have pretty specific requirements regarding facilities. But yeah, definitely in terms of some of the other unit types that are listed at the bottom. That makes sense.
Michael, I think if we get in, when we're getting into cohousing, I think we're getting into multifamily, um, zones. I don't think those, you know, we want to allow those or open the Pandora's box of getting those into R1 zones.
Yeah. I'm just, you know, it, I, again, I like the way that there's so many of these things saying we're, we're open to new ideas, but at the same time that they all have a, they all have a threshold of, of the idea doesn't become acceptable. Um, so that was just the, I, I always try to game these things. What's the scenario? Most radical scenario I can come up with, with, with that. And that, that's what that was. But if it's not a concern of others, you know, and if it's, if it's got to come before a commission anyway, there's, there's, there's a slowdown process there that's not being done by right.
Yeah.
I, I think that what I didn't like about this, this, um, couple of sentences, the last couple of sentences of that implementation action. So this will include exploration of allowing tiny homes or micro homes. So in the industry and, and I'm kind of speaking generally and, uh, there's a kind of a misconception that tiny homes and micro homes built on, uh, chassis, I mean, for, with axles, for lack of a better term, you know, not on, not, not a slab on grade or not, not a foundation type of permanent foundation type of dwelling. That's what the industry believes a tiny home is. And I just, I don't want to see these things popping up in people's front yards. To be frank.
That's actually one of the things we'll be discussing.
These things popping up in people's front yards?
Not necessarily front yards, but on properties. Yes. That's the idea of this comment in between using some of the SB2 funding. It's one of the priority areas, um, for HCD and releasing the grant funding.
Hmm. Okay. I don't like it, but it sounds like I'm alone.
Well, I think again, it's, it's the, I'll say again, the devil's in the details. It sort of depends on what that ends up looking like and what our policy ends up looking like, I think.
And I'm always good with exploration. It's, it's good to investigate. You may investigate and decide, you know, this just doesn't fit our town. Or you may decide this is a great idea and expensive way to get somebody a really complete little unit. So I'm okay with exploration.
I, I know I'm going to sound like my old self on our soapbox here, but, um, you know, factory built housing is factory built housing. It's subject to title 25. It's a different set of rules. There are rules for these, you know, factory built houses, things built on chassis. And it, you know, having the city jump into that arena just is a bad idea. And we should be building only title 24 housing. And, you know, if people want to bring in a tiny home that's factory built, great. I just don't think we should be, and, and I know we're going to, it sounds like we're going to get to this at a different time. I'm just going to be on my soapbox for a minute here. I don't think we should be allowing folks to factory build their own tiny home on a chassis. That's just my, my thing. So.
Yeah. Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm a proponent of foundations myself. So, okay, moving on to, um, I'm, uh, H120, H121, H122. I just had an issue on the, um, on H1120 where we're trying to build a prototype, prototype plans for ADUs. We've got such a variety of, of lot sizes and we are not, uh, this, the city was not developed as tracks. So I don't see a prototype house to, to develop a prototype plan from. Other than the only, the only way is to, is a garage conversion. It's the only consistent feature we have on houses where you could do a prototype on. So,
I think this is getting into, uh, the tiny house issue and, and, you know, uh, again, and that's, I think the city of Slow did it wrong. And I don't want to, I would not like to see that happen here.
I think, I think it's a, there's a difference to me because I have the same kind of note that, that Jerry did on, on mine. And to me, it's not so much, it's the idea of a plan. It's almost like standards are one thing and a plan is something else. And I, I think, uh, you know, when we, when we determine what these things are going to be, I think we can put criteria in for what they are and give the person freedom to how to meet those, those outcomes or whatever we want criteria, whatever they would be as opposed to a, a, a plan, because I, I don't see that, that happening. Uh, we don't have the, you know, acre lots with enough space to put a generic plan down. Um, so I think that's a, that's a concern of mine too.
Yeah. I would almost like to eliminate that action item altogether.
We have grant funding for it. We can eliminate it.
Okay. Maybe can we?
And the grant application was approved by city council.
Okay.
We're going to look at this.
Can we create it? Can we change it to standards?
No.
Rather than plans?
No, that's not what we applied for the grant for.
And it doesn't mean that people have to use that. They can build their own. It's just a way to try to give streamlined approval for someone that has a light or a site that can be site adapted to the prototype and wants to use it.
Okay. Are we going to, are we going to do it to 2,400 square foot, 15% grade lot? Are we going to do it to 2,800 square foot?
It's going to be a challenge for the, for the folks involved. And this is something that a lot of jurisdictions have asked for, uh, the state to do statewide. And the state has said, it's impossible, like you're saying.
Yeah.
It's impossible just for your relatively small city. So
Right.
I think it's going to be a design challenge that will be really interesting. Um, well, but yeah, it's, it's not going to work for every site.
And, and we are partnering, we are looking to partner with some of the other jurisdictions in the county to develop these.
Okay.
The ADUs that are built in, 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 in this city are largely very small. So it's not as difficult as you might think. It's just, I don't know how, we're not exactly sure how often it would be, they could, they would be used, but in, in general, the ADUs that we're building are in like a 500 square foot range and smaller.
I think if I'm, if I'm looking at this right, um, I mean, I think Jerry's point is well taken. You know, every garage is going to be a little different. Every, you know, ADU is going to be a little different. I think what I see, what I see working in this would be a, a tiny house, a, a appendix queue CRC California residential code type of design where you have a, you know, a, a 250 square foot footprint and you have the loft and you have, you know, everything that appendix queue allows you to do. Um, you know, the, the egress is actually in the roof. You know, in a 250 square foot area, that may work excellently. Um, anyway, I digress. I'm sorry.
I, I agree with you, but I just don't see, I, I don't see us putting that into the beach track. You know, where you have five foot setbacks all the way around. I don't see it putting into, you know, North Main Street, you got, you know, or are you going to put it in a Del Mar track where you got 8,000 square foot lots? You know, there's just such a, we've got the grant funding. I guess it's going to go ahead. I just.
Well, if you only need 12 by 12 footprint, um, you know, that's not very big. You mean, people can squeeze 12 by 12 anywhere. Um, you know, you could throw in little tiny house appendix queue type of, uh, dwelling in there. I think that's, that's what that says to me. I don't know.
Well, I, I, I thought this was, was to be, I thought this would be a, a cost saving effort for the owner. And, you know, my, initially my concern was that it would be a sizable cost to Scott's office. But now that I'm, I'm hearing that the grant money is available, it won't cost his office and we have something available, whether it might not work, but then in some cases it might work, in which case it saves the homeowner who wants to build one and he's so money. All right. That's, that's reasonable.
Okay. Well, it looks like we've got to, let's go ahead and move on. It looks like it's, we've got grant funding. It's already been set in motion. So.
Just on foundations.
Okay. So we're, we're through 20, 21 and 22. Any, any comments on those?
I just, I just like to take a break if we could. We have about 10 pages left.
What was that, Michael? I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
I was, I was wondering if we could take a break after this one.
Okay. Well, we're, we're into the H2s. So why don't we take, take 10 minutes then? Okay. Housing stock. Sure. No let loss in existing housing. So we've got, uh, 2.1 through 2.6. Any, any questions or any comments?
There's actually seven on my list.
Oh, okay. That's on the next page online. So let's do that.
This is, uh, this is where some of those winners comments come in. You know, 2.4 says support improvements to existing mobile home parks to preserve affordability. And I, I think that one is probably reasonable. I didn't know if there was any text in that one that we thought needed to be modified. I think there's some down in the next, uh, implementation action, uh, down in 2.1.4 that we could look at. But that one struck me as, as satisfactory at this point.
If I had a general comment, um, this is, there's a lot of, a lot of comments, but not a lot of how we're going to enforce. So like, for example, you know, policy H2.1, how are we going to enforce the section eight subsidy that the homeowners or the owners consider it?
I think that goes into the implementation actions. And then on 2.7, it's discouraged large, single family home development. Are we talking about that in, on the large lots? Are we just talking about that on the R3 and R4 zoning? Basically the down zoning, Scott? What's the? Basically, the downzoning, Scott. What's the? What's the focus of that?
My read is just, you know, we have multifamily residential lots and our current zoning allows for development of single-family homes on them. This is another one of those policies that gets at not doing that. I think it's my take. Yeah.
Okay, as long as we're not trying to restrict the mix of housing on the R1. You know, just so long as I'm not reading that wrong. It seems like that's what it's doing, is trying to to allow maximum density. But
Well, in a way, I mean, in my mind, it's it's I had an example of a 1950s house on the middle of three lots. And the people wanted to tear down the house and rebuild it. And we talked to them about trying to maximize the density and made sure that they were aware of the opportunities on the site rather than doing the same thing again and precluding two other new homes.
Okay.
And I think it looks at, you know, it's like, hey, you're multifamily, you know, zoning, build multifamily housing as opposed to the the building below the density that would otherwise be allowed if you're building, you know, for if you're building multifamily housing, you get higher densities. If you're building single-family houses in a multifamily zone, you're just putting multiple ones on those, on those units, you're gonna get fewer of them. I think it's looking at all of those things.
Okay, that's kind of, that's how I read it. I just wanted to be sure. You know.
Yeah, I don't think it has anything to do with, I mean, it, there's nothing inherently bad about larger homes. And especially when you have a lot of the areas in town where slope have larger lots and you have multiple stories to to develop them, I mean, larger homes on those size lots makes sense, I mean.
Yeah. Okay. So moving on to the implementation items, we've got H2.1.1 through 2.1.3. Does anybody have any comments on those or issues? Okay, then 2.1.4 and 2.1.5. Any? Any notes on those?
2.1.4 was the one that I think it's written from the owner's perspective, which I think is fine to make them aware of that. But I think we might add another phrase in there that maybe says, and maintain low-income affordability. Because upkeep of the economically viable mobile home parks, economically viable sounds like the developer term for the owners of the park. And that's, that's fine, because you want them to keep, to be maintaining and and doing upkeep to make them, you know, attractive and livable. But but you also want to balance that with maintaining low-income affordability, because we don't have very many places besides that.
So so the way I read this, this is written to the, to the owner, the park owner that owns both the the lots and the houses and is renting them out. It's gotta, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. Where it's not written, what it's not written to is to what you said, Michael, is to the, the the park owner that leases the ground sites out and then to individual owners. And so we're, we've got a conflict there where the park, where the park owner wants to maximize their profit to remain viable. And while the mobile homeowners, the homeowners want to minimize what they pay to or land or the landlords.
I think what this is referring to is to make sure that they can continue to operate it as a mobile home park, because some of those sites have a higher and better use. And we'd like to maintain the number of affordable mobile home park sites. So make sure that we're helpful to the property owners so they can continue to operate it as it is.
Okay. It seems like we want to try to have both of them, you know, both modes for both. Trying to encourage both, you know, so.
The NPRO program, the funding source that's listed there is an HCD program and and the intent is to help the residents as well. And I was just looking back at the webpage for that program. So basically, to finance preservation of affordable mobile home parks by conversion to ownership or control by resident organizations, nonprofit housing sponsors, or local public entities. So part of this program is, part of this more obeyed housing element program is referring to the opportunities under that state program. So I think it is, the intent was not just to serve the owners.
Okay.
Hey, Jerry?
Yeah.
I have a question. Does does, does anyone have an idea of the of the of the adequacy of the state stabilization regulations? Because I'm, I'm not at all familiar with it, but the, you know, the, again, the assumption I read into that is that if we adopt those regulations, we're okay to prevent skyrocketing rents in the mobile home parks. Is there a, so somebody give me sort of a nutshell explanation of what that means?
We have our own rent stabilization ordinance.
I'm sorry?
We have our own rent stabilization ordinance in mobile home parks.
Okay.
Okay, good. So do we want to add anything to this item? Michael had a.
The only thing I was gonna say is that, could we say something like, the city will promote the continued use and upkeep of economically viable? That that's, says that the policy is to maintain the use there. And then by keeping mobile home, mobile, keeping park owners and individual homeowners, mobile homeowners informed of opportunities.
I think that's a good addition. Do I, do we have agreement on that? Okay, I see nods. So Amy, is that a problem? Okay. Okay, so 2.1.5. Any? Any issues with that on the conversions? 2.1.6 and 2.1.7?
I had a question on 2.1.7. On safe, delectated housing units code enforcement. In a lot of cases, these homes maybe, you know, have an elderly person living in them or somebody who just doesn't have the means to bring it up to whatever code it it needs to be brought up to. Could in lieu fees be used to provide assistance for income-qualified people to help them stay in a home, but bring it up to a better standard? Is is that a possible use? So in other words, not creating a brand-new, you know, income-qualified home, but allowing somebody to stay in the income-qualified home that they have that is sort of dilapidated?
If we had a, if we had a a home, you know, repair program?
Because that's something to consider. This this town has a lot of homes that are in that category.
The city had a program through CDBG many years ago, and I think the CDBG and Home Funds that we use was a was a home rehab program. And we're still, we still get money back every once in a while when folks sell their houses that were part of that.
I know CAPS Slow does stuff like that. I don't know if they'll do that in the city limits, but I see them do that in the county all the time. I I'm, I was assuming they would do that countywide, you know, even in the cities. But they do have programs like that, like low-income loans or no-interest loans at all or something like that.
Yeah, we used to have, you know, a a contingent in community development, you know, a a person in community development that did that well before I got here. But they managed the program and then with budget cuts and that type of thing, that that position went away.
Well, would that be something anybody would want to add? Or or maybe add an investigation of a way to do that?
I think that's, that would be a good program if if we can have, if there is a funding source. And I'm.
I'm thinking of the in-lu fees as harsh, you know, some part of the funding source. And I know they're pretty depleted right now, so.
Yeah.
Generally don't have much.
Yeah, they typically don't have much. I think we need to be looking for some grant programs or something outs- outside or a you know, a nonprofit organization, you know, you know, you know, the helping, you know, self-help building, self-help. I think they have programs that use that. So I think we need to do something in conjunction with them or with somebody like that. Yeah. So I don't know how we would.
Well, I think that's when the code enforcement officer and Scott and, you know, the building inspector, they they start talking to these folks about the potential resources listed in 2.1.7, you know, CAPS slows, people self-out. Those not, those types of nonprofits, churches, you know, churches sometimes will can get involved and help, you know, someone who's, you know, potentially gonna lose their house because of code enforcement issues, you know. That's what churches, my my opinion, that's what they exist to do is, you know, that kind of works, so.
So maybe if we have something like saying that the city will direct the owners to available programs to retrofit or upgrade their
It does kind of say that. It says, offer to provide homeowners with a list of potential resources. I was just trying to figure out, you know, maybe a way to help them through the city financially with the in-lu fees. But again, we don't really have any right now, so.
Yeah, I think funding would be the big problem there.
Yeah, I agree. Okay.
If if we can, kind of, I wanted to go through the implementation action so I can kind of readdress my first statement, which, you know, we start talking about H, a policy H2.1, talking about enforcing the Section 8 subsidies and that that owners consider Section 8 vouchers. So that's a problem. I mean, that's a problem in the city that that folks don't owners of properties don't want to rent to Section 8 renters. How do we exactly intend to enforce this?
Well, I think there's state, state law coming down or has been approved on that?
The law's required. They're required to accept them, yeah.
That that doesn't require the owner to make the rent affordable. It just requires them to accept the Section 8 voucher from the tenant.
Yeah.
Okay, so are you down with that, Jesse?
I, yeah, I didn't, didn't realize that was a thing.
You have a fair housing, fair housing section and implementation action, and I think that would fall under. People could complain if if they felt like people were not complying with that state law.
Would they be applying to, complaining to HCD?
Um, I'm just gonna find the the number for you. It's later in this chapter. So it's goal H6 and the policy and implementation actions under that goal. And he it's H611, so CRLA handles the complaints.
Okay.
California Rural Legal Assistance.
And we we actually maintain, we have, we have handouts up front for the, they deal with a lot of stuff like this.
Okay, you satisfied, Jesse?
Yes, sir.
Okay, cool. Okay, goal H3, special needs, addressing unique housing needs for special needs individuals in new or adaptive existing homes. We have policy 3.1 and 3.2. Any, any issues with those? Okay, then the implementation actions. We got H3 1.1, 3.1.2.
On 3.1.2, it might be my own hangup. The the female-headed households, is is that politically correct to say, single-parent households? Or is it meant to be female-headed households with children and you would add single-parent households with children? I, I didn't know if those were tied to.
It's up to to you guys. And the data that is in the data packet is for female-headed households. And that's what the section in the needs assessment portion of the document relies on. But it's really up to the city whether you want to say single-parent households.
I'd I'd like to make it broader, just because the demographics are always shifting and and, you know, I especially when you have a a gender-based thing like that, I'd I'd want to make sure that everyone is covered that's a single parent, because that's a, might be a different type of need.
So that terminology, because I had the same issue that you did, that terminology is throughout the document. So are you suggesting we change that terminology throughout the entire document?
Yes.
Actually, yes.
So I don't know if we can, we'd have to look at the data sources and see if that would be.
I know there's program types that are specific for certain groups of the.
There's, there's data packs that HCD provides, and that's the labeling on the data pack. So we can't really change the name of the data without changing the source and the content.
Single-headed household, Amy?
Yeah.
Just do it. Just leave it, just leave the female-headed households in there and just add single household as well.
Yeah. Well, I have a, I have a little bit of a problem with that, too. So what if there's two females and children in the, in the, in the, in the household? I mean, that's a female-headed household, but that's not really what this is supposed to be.
The intent is that there's only one parent.
Right.
Of that data, yeah. That's the intent. That is what the data is about, yeah.
I could see leaving the data as is, because that's quoting another source. But when we're talking about our city and our implement, implementation actions, I think we could go to single-parent household and sort of cover all the politically correct bases that way. So does that?
I would suggest that we look back at where that occurs in the whole document and we'd be happy to work with staff to come up with a recommendation. I totally understand the sensitivity around that and I, I think it's important.
Well, one of the things I'd be worried about on that, too, is that, you know, you know, female even head of households are still making 78% of what a male head of household would make or, you know, so their income. So I think this was set to help identify that problem. So if we dilute through political correctness, dilute that resource for them, what are we doing to that?
Yeah, so I think, again, we can look back at it and maybe be a little more nuanced in in talking about gender and and make sure that we're explaining the data correctly, but also that we recognize that all single-parent households could have a tougher time than
Struggle.
Two-parent households.
Yeah, I think adding the single-parent household will pick all the other letters that kind of get missed by this binary system. So. Okay, we got agreement on that, guys?
I don't know. What did we agree on?
We're adding single-parent household to that sentence.
I don't know. I think I still have issue with that.
Okay. We got all night.
I don't want to take all night on this. I I I just, I, it 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 hits me in a weird spot, like it probably hits Michael in a weird spot. I mean, the the gender fluidity and people's, you know, ability to I I don't know, just gender in here seems inappropriate, just generally.
I agree. I I would just go with the single, eliminate this female-headed household in this section where we're talking about our city's implementations. Go with single-parent household. You're you're identifying a group that's considered having more challenges and special needs and generally are lower income. You could have a very wealthy female head of household, single mom. You could have a transgender person. You could have, so, yeah, I think that I think you're looking to identify these lower income. And and so that's what we're looking at. And these are examples of things that we might look at. But I think, do I just single out females perhaps?
There may be programs specifically set for female-headed, single female-headed households.
And they will find them then.
But then they would be lumped in with the, with this, with the single-parent household rather than the female-headed household.
I think we get the gist of what the commission's interested in. Let us go take a look at it and we'll report that back to the city council. That you had this issue and this is how we resolved it and they can make, you know, and in. Um, that you had this issue and this is how we resolved it and they can make, you know, and, and we can go from there, is that acceptable?
That sounds good.
Yep. Great, Scott. Okay, so I didn't lose my place, we're on H four, goal H four homelessness. Provide safe housing and shelter opportunities for homeless persons in Moro Bay, which we have been doing a quite frankly, a shitty ass job.
A technical term, no planning?
You're still on TV, Jerry.
Pardon the French. Okay, so, um, who wants to go on? This, do we want to, we've got four, we got policy four point one, four point two, four point three and four point four. So who wants to take a shot?
The, the only thing about this that struck me is I think one of the commentators gave us some uh, text about this as well, but it, it struck me that in the regional nature of what's being discussed here, it sounds as if we're gonna ship them out. And, um, I think that in H four point two, we could say something, work with churches, other organizations to find opportunity for sheltering the homeless medical care job, search assistance and other identified needs, preferably in Moro Bay or in Moro Bay, just directly say that, that our preference is the policy is to have it happen here, not ship the problem to somebody else to solve.
I think we need, go ahead, there are other people, I've, I've commented on this before, so.
I was looking at this and to my, I may not, there may be something going on, but I'm not aware of the neighboring communities of Cayucus, La Sosa's and Moro Bay working together, I'm, I'm sure if I'm wrong about that, but it just seems because of the proximity of these three communities, these cities should really be working together, because I don't think for some reason, some of Moro Bay's homeless people end up in La Sosa's. I don't think by any stretch of the imagination that's shipping them out of town, I think these three communities should really be talking about this one region together. So I, I would, so what do I mean, so in implementation, in implementation for what it might be, the city will cooperate with neighboring cities in particular, something like that, to call attention to the need to sort of open up some dialogue with Cayucus and La Sosa's.
Okay, Jesse?
I think it's pretty well stated when it says, uh, work with regional nonprofit agencies on shelter solutions, and I, I think Joe hit it right on the, on the, on the nail on the head, this is a regional problem. You know, I mean, as I drive around the county, I see different people different, I hate to say this, but it's just kind of true, where, you know, if folks that may be homeless but have a car may, you know, wanna congregate in a different part of the county than folks that without a car or, 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 you know, different, different circumstances within their homelessness, uh, contribute to where they wanna, wanna be. So it's a, to me, it's a regional problem that is only gonna be solved regionally, uh, but I think policy four point one kind of nails it pretty good.
Susan, did you have anything to?
Uh, just that I agree, I, I think, um, Moro Bay is too small a community to be able to come up with single solutions, you know, for shelter. I think it, it's gonna take a regional approach, even if it's just a coastal approach and sort of a creative approach to safe parking areas and in addition to safe places just to camp out. So, I, I think this is pretty, it's pretty comprehensive.
Okay, well, one of the problems I have with all of this is, this is pushing it into, you know, when we, when we're trying to create regional solutions, nothing gets done. And it hasn't gotten done. There they, they are, you know, the homeless are here, they're under our bridges, they're in our creeks. They're, they're in the state park, they're this is not a solu- a solution to say that they all should be sheltered in San Luis or they all should be sheltered in Atascadero. It doesn't work, they're can, you know, there was a, there was a campsite, you know, on, you know, on Dog Beach. That was there for two weeks till the, till the sheriffs came to break, break it up. You know, they, if you drove by the, the off ramp on Moro Boulevard, there was a huge encampment there in the, in the, you know, they're basically camping in the roundabout, we, they're here. You know, they're, they're creating a hygienic problem. And we're not gonna, just by saying we need to have a regional solution, doesn't solve any of the problems at all. Nobody wants to take responsibility for any of this because it creates adversarial, you know, situations. But we need to be setting up, you know, some safe, safe parking sites that are, that can be monitored so that they're, they're at least, we're not putting people in harms way, we're having, huh, you know, sanitary facilities, even if it's just an outhouse, I mean, even if it's a porta potty, it's better than having them you know, defecating on the beach or defecating in the, in the creeks and having that carried out, out to the, the bay or the creeks.
But don't you see that is something we would work with La Sosa's and Cayucus on, uh, you know, there's, there's this stretch here and that's gonna include county. And I'm not saying you send people to San Luis Obispo or Atascadero or anywhere else, but I, I don't I just, I feel like Moro Bay is too small by itself to solve the problems and it's also suggesting that there are borders that are artificial.
Susan, we're not gonna solve the problem. But what we're gonna do is we're gonna create, you know, we need to create a space for our own benefit, this is not, you know, this is not philanthropy, this is not, you know, altruistic. I'm worried about, you know, I'm worried about the hygiene of of me going out into the ocean water or me going out into the bay and that directly affecting me, because what happens on the, you know, under the bridge, you know, affects the waterways, it affects the bay, it affects the beach. And we're not doing anything because we want a regional solution. We've got a certain amount of people here, we need to create a certain amount of safe spaces for them. Especially during this pandemic. Especially during this pandemic.
Well, the safe parking thing is, is, is something that, uh, I, I'm not sure if it's of a county slash nonprofit agency partnership or if it's just a strictly county thing, but county is doing those types of, uh, uh, programs, but, you know, not there's a lot of folks that don't have cars either, so I mean, you know, it's, it's fine for those folks with cars, but, uh, those folks without cars, um, that, there's nothing, that, that doesn't help them, but there are some nonprofits that have, uh, that could use additional help, you know, in, uh, the shower trailer, you know, they, they'll come to San Luis and they'll allow folks to take a shower once a week, maybe we can have the churches or, you know, encourage churches to partner up with these folks and, and maybe volunteer to man those types of facilities, maybe we can get that trailer to Moro Bay once a week or once a month or.
Okay, well, for instance, Jesse, you know, I, I, I agree, you know, this is but we're, we've got, we've got city land where we're storing old boats and RVs for people in the valley just so they don't have to drive them back and forth. Why can't, you know, why can't we transfer those to the safe parking lot and safe parking camping? I would, I would rather have a safe spot for somebody to to have temporary housing there than support somebody that doesn't want to drive his car back, doesn't want to drive his boat back and forth and may never, never even use it for the next three or four years.
This is a reminder, last two weeks ago, you added, uh, your desire to add a goal that would assist an emergency plan for a safe place for the homeless population.
Right.
That is not in the document because we haven't redrafted the document with your comments, but that was in the staff report. Um, and you also had a desire on inclusionary housing fees, so, so both of those will be in the redrafted document.
Okay, great, great, and then, did we have that on an implementation action also, or is that just in the?
Once we draft the goal, then we'll, we'll draft the rest of it, but we, there wasn't to redraft a document and I didn't think anyone wanted to start over.
No, thanks Nancy, okay, I just want to make sure, I guess I'm on my high horse and I apologize for that, but.
The staff report does say that it called for an implementation action.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, if, if I can, if I can, if I can add, yeah, I'm in, in, in agreement with jury in terms, I wasn't advocating a regional approach, I was just, you know, recognizing that uh, there's probably what, a, a mile that separates Cayucus from Moro Bay and probably what, a four or five minute drive that separates Moro Bay from La Sosa's, that's something much different than this countywide regional approach, which I don't think would work, but, you know, something between the three cities could help out, I think.
All the help we can get. You know, it's gonna, I think it's just gonna be all hands on deck, cause as what we've been doing, it hasn't worked.
Well, I think you're onto something with it with the parking area, and I remember when Richard was on the commission, he was, uh, uh, you know, very staunchly trying to get, uh, warming centers for, in, in the wintertime, um, and using, uh, some sort of city resources or maybe even school buses or something like that, you know, maybe just to keep people from, you know, passing away while it's, you know, extremely cold, so.
And even allowing tents, you know, you know, with you know, in the parking areas to, you know, for people that don't have cars to, you know, to allow temporary tents there.
I, I just think that it's critical to, to state the problem and not try to evade the problem, because we could have a different political atmosphere at some point where this was totally ignored again. And there'd be no incentive because of the policies say we're, we're doing regional cooperation. You know, we, we, I'm, I'm not against regional cooperation at all, but if we don't say we want to have the problem here solved here, wherever we can, that's, that's avoiding the issue, I think.
I think that's stated in H four three, community involvement. I mean, I think, uh, you're right, the H four one says regional homeless shelters, but the rest of it really can apply to our community. Right, and they're hopefully writing this other implementation.
Maybe it's just say Moro Bay community involvement.
Okay, well, let's see what the other, with the addendum comes back at, the change comes back. And, um, okay, so any other comment on that, or should we move on to H five? Okay, well, okay, move on? Okay, okay, moving on to H five, uh, housing, housing costs. Help reduce housing costs so more people can afford housing in Moro Bay. Okay, don't get me started. Okay, policy H five one, uh, reduction in operational repair costs, H five two. And then we go into implementation actions, can you comment on the goals or the policy?
I, I just comment that I think this is all, you know, great stuff to do, but I always feel like, um, especially the, the retrofitting is great, but it's initially expensive and hard for people to do. And you may see results down the road, but that could be a challenge for somebody who's already having challenges financially. I mean, there have been some programs, PG&E had some great insulation programs and that sort of thing, I think at one point they were even giving out refrigerators that use less energy.
Yeah, there are some charity action, but most of this stuff's gonna get done when, when the housing gets rehabbed.
Right.
Well, it's also, you know, there, there'll also be programs put in place through Mon- Monterey, um, Community Power.
Yeah.
So they have programs that they're, that they're, you know, they have in the pipeline to assist with some of these things, um, and those will be coming out, you know, over time.
Okay, so implementation actions, H five.
The, the one thing up on the policy is when it talks about reduction dependence on vehicular transportation, it never overtly, um, talks about the larger transit networks, like the county or working with whatever that group is, I'm, I'm not sure who that runs the county buses and things like that, but when we put, when we put that project on, um, you know, Tascadero uh, and, and Main Street there, that's a, that's gonna be a bucket full of people who are probably gonna need transit at some point, you know, and so this this idea of just, um, you know, what's written there, I, I, because down below it does say, cause I was, I was looking to see, well, where does it say anything about, uh, it, then, five point one point two, um, does talk about it. So it, 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 it seems like five point one point two has the solution, but five point, H five point two up above in the goal section doesn't talk about public transit.
This is gonna be an unpopular opinion, but I've always thought that paid parking downtown would try to, would be a policy that we could implement that would reduce dependence on vehicular traffic, but that's kind of went nowhere every time I brought it up, so.
We are, um, looking at paid parking options right now.
Yeah.
For both on the waterfront and in the downtown, and we're looking at, uh, having it evaluated through a consultant.
Yeah, paid parking is, is, you know, that's important, you know, it's an important source. It's, it's how San Luis redeveloped their business district through parking meters, so.
So I'd also say that some of this has to do with where people live and where they work. And if you can live where you work, then your reliance on your, your car to get somewhere is gonna go down. I will also say that the pandemic has been really great for I think I put gas in my car one time in four months and my car is a gas hog. So there you go.
Yeah, I agree with that, okay, so our implementation actions, five point one point one, five point one point two. Any, um, any additions or changes, anybody wants to see on any of those? Okay, then let's move on to H six, equal opportunity and sure equal access to sound, affordable housing for all persons, regardless of race, creed, age, or sex. Uh, policy, we've got the policy, uh, six point one. And then we've got the implementation actions, six point one point one, six point one point two. Um, and that's, that's it, so.
Um, hate to be this guy, but I mean, if we're talking about protected classes here, I'm wondering if it would be sound to include or orientation in that, uh, race, creed, age, sex, or, you know.
If we need, yeah.
I'm sure they're included in the fair employment and housing portions because they're, you know.
So Amy, what's the appropriate wording these days?
Um, I don't know if gender would be covering that gender and reference, something like that, uh, definitely.
The Supreme Court ruled that sex meant, uh, gender preference or orientation?
I'm not sure, but I, I mean, I guess I'm just saying maybe we should think about including some sort of reference there, whatever the politically correct term would be. Just to make sure we're being inclusive, so.
Or we could take out all the words and just say the city declares that all persons will have equal access to sound and affordable housing.
I like that.
Yeah, you, you don't really need to qualify it, it's just if, if you're human. You know, I mean, a dog maybe has some other rights too, and a cat, but, you know.
Yeah, whatever we think, but I mean, yeah, I think either, yeah, maybe either put the right, put, put a term in there that, that's inclusive or remove all terms.
I'm, I'll just chime in on this one because I think this is a goal that, that HC, if this one gets changed, they will want to look at it, the revisions beyond making it more expansive, if, if, I totally hear what you're saying, Susan, but if it is not explicit, they might have a comment about that. I don't know for sure. This is a goal and the policies within it, policies and actions within it that the state cares a lot about.
So then we might come up with some more terms that are more inclusive. There are, that are more categories of folks to include in this.
Do we want to leave it with with staff and with Amy to given them the direction? I think everybody agrees on it.
We'd be happy to do that.
Unless, if we can eliminate the terms or add more, whichever is more appropriate, Amy.
Sounds good.
Okay. And then so then we have the implementation actions. Anybody have an issue? Six point one point one or six point one point two?
Oh, that pretty much spells it all out right there, huh?
Yeah. Okay, then we're going in, we've got the table H forty six.
Well, well, I'm sorry, I mean, or while we're talking about it, I mean, I guess I just don't see anything specifically talking about, you know, sexual orientation or, you know, transgender or, you know, making sure the all protected class, all folks that need to be protected are protected within the protected classes here. I don't see anything. Maybe that could be included there as well.
Yeah, so Amy, you've got marching orders on that too, to check that, to make sure that that's all inclusive.
Is that for action two or for both of the actions?
Probably for both of those.
Okay.
Okay, so then we're at the H, table H forty six. And the quantified objective summaries. Anybody have any issues with any of the numbers or the way they're portrayed?
I I guess one of the things in the table with the footnote, it says there aren't any federally assisted affordable units at risk currently. But does this assume that if we have some, we're only gonna maintain five? Was the Haslow project in that category? That we just passed?
So this is, this is a very specific requirement from the state. They know the Hassel project wouldn't fall into this category because it's not in service yet. And and the at-risk units are those that are potentially going to not be subsidized within ten years. Basically by twenty thirty, within ten years of the beginning of your housing element planning period. So because you don't have any that are in that category, the state wants you to have something in this category in this table. Uh, it's, there's, it's not very quantifiable. So if you want this to be a different number, that's probably fine. We don't think that HCD would have a big issue with that as long as it's a higher number. But there aren't any projects that trigger this part of the state law currently in Moro Bay. So there isn't, there isn't really anything to tie it to in terms of the what number is included.
I just didn't want to give the sense that if we would be successful in getting some of these extremely low or very low numbers, we wouldn't want to lose any of them. So if the preservation objective is five, I would almost rather see a percentage there of let's let's save ninety five percent of them. You know.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanted, you could include the numbers that are corresponding to the projects that you already have. You do have several assisted unit projects already that are constructed. That just, none of them are current, they're not at risk because the, you know, basically the organizations that manage them are keeping them affordable. So it's, it's really up to you.
And are those, Amy, are all those locked in past the time period of this housing element?
Right. And there's analysis of that in the needs assessment section.
Okay.
Account for it in here, honestly. Given that we don't have any at risk, they're saying we have to put something in here anymore. Takes little sense to me.
It's, it's, yeah, I don't really agree either. It's a strange.
I would just rather put an asterisk there that says, keep all of them that we have.
And there is an implementation action that says that. You know, it's, it's, state law was updated since the last housing element, there are really specific requirements for what the city and what owners are responsible for. It's all laid out in there, so. It's probably something about state statute that needs to get cleaned up, the why it has to be in this table.
Okay. You satisfied with that, Michael? Okay. I kind of see a nod there, so.
Yeah, I, I, I say it's, 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 it's a, it's a very abstract thing since we don't have any, how many are we gonna have? And, you know, I just saw the, saw the table and thought, wow. Why aren't we trying to save twenty? Even if we don't have, you know, it, it, it just looked like, you know, another goal, if you get some, don't lose any. But, you know, I, I understand, it's a, these things take a long time to accumulate, so we'll be lucky if we have five to save, probably.
Okay. Well, yeah, I think it's the risk of them going out. They're all locked in past this timeframe. You know, because we didn't do that good twenty-five years ago. Okay, so we have a, a recommendation to forward this to the city council to adopt the negative declaration and to approve the twenty-three, twenty, twenty-eight housing element update. Scott, do we need a motion on this or? Okay, so would somebody like to make a motion?
I move we forward a positive recommendation for the city's housing element, including the numerous modifications suggested at this meeting by the majority nodding. Is there a more formal note on the planning commission agenda here?
So, yeah, I mean, you're, you're, you'd be adopting Resolution PC dash twelve twenty, recommending approval of the the housing elements with the recommended changes from the planning commission.
Yes.
Okay, do we, do we have a second?
Second.
Does anybody want to discuss anything else?
No.
Okay.
I did want to say thank you for, for, for putting up with my commentary. I, I talk out loud a lot of times, I'd make it more pointed in the future.
Well, we've all, you know, I don't have any outbreaks, you know, I don't, I don't go on any rants, so.
You don't even pass, Jerry, I tell you.
It was about something that is important.
Well, I apologize to everybody out there for my indiscretions, but if you knew me, you wouldn't be surprised.
Passion is good. Passion is good.
Okay, uh, Scott, would you like to call the vote?
Um, sure, um, Commissioner Lucas? Commissioner Stewart?
Yes.
Commissioner Graffia?
Hi.
Commissioner Barone?
Hi.
Chair Lur?
Yes.
Ocean Pass five zero, thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was B one. Okay. New business, don't see anything here, unfinished business. We take care of everything as it comes up, so we don't have nothing. Fighting commissioner comments and future agenda items. I think everybody's commented out.
I just have a question. If we got it, I'm sorry for missing it, but did we get the housing element? I'm sorry, the that's late, I'm sorry, the vacation ordinance, the vacation rental ordinance?
You don't, you don't have it yet. We are still working through it. In fact, I was emailing back and forth to the city attorney's office yesterday on some final changes to it. So I think we have it due back to the Vacation Rental Committee, Susan. Have you guys received that back yet?
We have not.
Okay, I didn't think so. So it'll, our final draft will go back to the Vacation Rental Committee, give them one, you know, last chance, I think. That's how we're doing it to, to weigh in based on the changes that we provided and then it'll be coming forward. I think at the second meeting in, in August, which is the eighteenth. That was the last conversation I had with the city manager was when we'd be bringing it back. So if it's not then, then it'll be the first one in September, but that's, that's what we're shooting for, so.
So since that's gonna be very contentious, are we gonna still try to do that Zoom or are we gonna?
It's gonna be Zoom. We're not going into meetings anytime soon.
And Jesse, it's not gonna be contentious. It's all just peace and love.
You can't please everybody. Somebody's gonna be upset, I promise.
It was actually, the, one of the great things about the process was that the committee had people from representing all parts of the community and the industry. And of course, you know, everybody's just bringing their own thing to the table. But it, it was a real collaborative effort. And everybody realized they had to give a little bit. Nobody got a hundred percent of what they wanted, but nobody lost either. And then, you know, it's, it's just a proposal. Obviously, it's a draft. But I, I think we all came at it with the feeling that we wanted to be able to present a community effort. So that it would be approvable by the majority of the community. So, you know, hope, hope for good things.
I'm sure you guys did a fine job.
Well, and again, it's gonna be the outreach to the community that sort of helps everybody get on board so that the, the agencies who next have to look at it, like Coastal Commission, will say, yeah, this community was really behind it. So we'll be behind it too. That's kind of the goal.
Okay, great, great. Looking forward to that. Scott, did you have any other comments?
You're, as, the Hassel project went to counsel on appeal at the last hearing and was approved, the appeal was denied. The project approved for one.
Awesome.
Was that the appeal based on the elevator?
That was one of the items in the appeal, yes.
Okay, just throwing this out there, anybody else have anything they want to say before we adjourn?
Oh, I did want to bring something up. We may not have the August fourth meeting. You guys got your housing element today. Good job. And I don't, I don't think, I'm gonna, I'll verify tomorrow and send an email out to you guys, but I, I don't think we have any agenda items for the fourth.
Okay. Okay, good. Save me all this commuting time.
I would say this really far in advance, I'll miss the second meeting in November, so.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. All right, guys. Thanks for the hard work and, you know, the thoughtful, you know, interface of going through this. This, this was, it was good work done by all. So at this point, we'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. You know, it's tentatively scheduled for August fourth, but maybe will be August eighteenth at twenty twenty at six PM and we will be doing this through, through the virtue of electrons, once again. All right, good night all.
Thanks, Jerry. Good job.